Good evening and welcome. In the St. Cloud School District, our mission is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. It is 7:00 PM on October 26th, and I'm going to call to order the meeting of the St. Cloud School Board. Mr. Moes, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, identifying the United States of America to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now would you call roll? Shannon Hawes.
Here.
Jeff Polis.
Here.
Jerry Von Korf.
Here.
Al Dollgren.
Here.
Bruce Moes here. Monica Segudo-Schwarz.
Here.
And Bruce Hentges.
Here.
Record will show that we're joined this evening by the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and our directors, and we have our directors Lori Posh and Gary Ganji and Amy Scalerud and Director of Communications and Community Outreach Tammy Deland, and this evening Tracy Boa and Carol Potter are unable to be with us. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. On tonight's agenda is item A, on tonight's consent agenda is item A, approval of the agenda; item B, approval of the minutes from the meetings of September 28th and October 11th; item C, approval of the monthly treasures report for July 2017; D, approval of payment and bills and other financial transactions in the grand total amount of $6,952.46; E, approval of personnel and staff changes; F, acceptance of grant awards and donations; G, Quarryview Education Center change orders totaling plus $68,845.17; H, a lease extension addendum number three with quality investments for space at Midtown Square; I, Lincoln Portable Classrooms change order totaling plus $3,173; J, Apollo High School HVAC infrastructure upgrades change order totaling plus $51,370.63; Item K, call for bids Quarryview Education Center floor covering and carpet; and item L, quarterly expenditures for Board members from July 1st, from July 1st, 2017 to September 30th, 2017, and the total amount on that was zero dollars, there were no expenditures. Is there any item that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda before we look for a motion? Seeing that there isn't, I'm looking for a motion.
Al, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
So we have motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion on any of these items? If not, Mr. Moes, would you call roll? Maker of the motion, Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Second maker, Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Al Dollgren.
Yes.
Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Monica Segudo-Schwarz.
Yes.
Bruce Moes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the information items. The first item included in the information items section is a school presentation that's going to be given to us by Lori Putnam, the Principal of Kennedy Community School. Lori?
Good evening Chair Dollgren, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Jeff, and those joining us this evening. Speaking for Derek and myself, we are honored to be here to share our Westwood and Kennedy stories. We know that you have a lot of data, and that shows you one part of who we are and what we do, but tonight we are excited to share the rest of our stories. We will be using a presentation style called Puchikachu, I might be getting that wrong. It's called Puchikachu 20 by 30, and it's 20 slides with no more than 30 seconds of speaking per slide. It was invented in Japan in 2003 as a way to creatively and concisely share information with an audience. Puchikachu has rapidly expanded across the globe since then, and we are excited to bring it to St. Cloud tonight, so we hope that you enjoy that. Sorry, I'm gonna try to make it through without coming. Do I need it? Thank you. Kennedy Community School serves almost 900 pre-K through 8th grade students in a welcoming and inclusive environment. Our community is increasingly diverse. Students of color make up 23% of our population, the largest percentage in Kennedy's history. 16% of the students we serve receive special education services, and over one-third qualify for free or reduced lunch. About 10% of our students receive EL services, with the majority of these scoring at Level 1 or 2 as measured by the access, which means that they are just beginning to acquire English language skills. Kennedy is a school of choice for many families. 27% of our students enroll from outside of our attendance area, with 4% of these families enrolling from outside of our district. In addition to creating a welcoming environment, we strive to educate the whole child and prepare students to be productive and engaged citizens in a world we don't and can't yet know. Today I want to show you how we consider students' physical, academic, and social needs to create an inclusive learning community that expects high achievement for all. I think we can all relate to how difficult it can be to sit still for long periods of time and to maintain a sustained focus while doing so. Recognizing this, we equipped every one of our classrooms with flexible furniture. We now offer floor rockers, core balance cushions, T stools, and more. We know that while every child has different physical needs, each requires the same from a learning environment. Structure balanced with choice, safety balanced by challenge. Some of our students like these standing balance boards. Others prefer the wobble stools that allow for gentle movement while remaining seated at a table, and still others want to stand while they learn and work. So far this year, only 1% of our students have repeated office referrals, which is a significant drop from this year, from last year at this time. It's clear that when our students have input into their physical environment and can adjust it to meet their needs, it contributes to a decrease in referrals. Simply put, our PK through 8th grade students are encouraged to move throughout their days. Similarly, we created a smart room for our students in PK through grade 2. The room provides students with opportunities to engage simultaneously in physical movement and academic learning. In a low stimulus environment, students rotate through six stations with activities that foster muscle development, hand-eye coordination, and reinforce academic skills being taught in the classrooms. The smart room is a quiet place where students can play, move, and learn all at the same time. Here, students are practicing their counting skills, strengthening the muscles used for writing and cutting, and building fine motor skills. This research-based intervention has over a decade of data that shows significant gains for participants in the areas of reading, writing, listening, and computational skills. Beyond the smart room, we encourage every teacher to integrate movement with academics to help students get the physical movement their growing bodies need. Every one of our classrooms incorporates movement through brain breaks or instructional strategies such as four corners. Conversely, students regularly play sight word tag and practice math facts through cooperative games in physical education classes. So far, you've learned about how Kennedy supports the physical needs of students to increase engagement and facilitate brain development. Now I'd like to show you how we creatively address the academic needs of our students. Here you see grade 2 students cooperatively using math manipulatives to deepen understanding of place value. At Kennedy, math instruction is a strength. 81% of our students made medium to high growth last year. 64% of our students in grades 3 through 8 were proficient as measured by the MCA, with several grade levels having close to 80% of their students proficient. Of the students scoring above 50, the proficiency mark, fully one-half of those exceeded standards and yet continue to show growth. We emphasize pre-testing for each new math skill and create flexible groupings based on the results. As students move in and out of leveled groups, they develop identities as mathematicians that are flexible and founded in a growth mindset. We teach students to focus on what they can do and to think "not yet" rather than "I Our hands-on approach to learning extends to language arts as well. Here, our students are sharpening their skills while operating on nonfiction texts. As a staff, we are again focusing on increasing our effectiveness with reading instruction. 80% of our students made medium to high growth last year, the highest percentage in the last five years. While 61.4% of our students in grades 3 through 8 were proficient, fully one-third exceeded standards and continued to show growth. A passion for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics education is evident throughout our PK through 8th grade classrooms. We use age-appropriate technologies such as Ozobots, B-bots, and Dash and Dot robots to teach algorithmic thinking and engage students in hands-on learning. Our emphasis on STEM is showing great results. Last year, 72% of our 5th graders met or exceeded science standards, 12% higher than the state average. Here, our student, our 6th grade students are using Google Hangout to converse with a NASA robotics engineer located in Houston. They'll meet doctors, mathematicians, and scientists from around the country over the course of the year. We are particularly excited about our newly formed competition robotics teams. Recognizing a need, we started a robotics program this year that has already engaged over 60 students, one-quarter of our middle school, with two all-female teams. The physical, academic, and social needs of students are intertwined, and addressing each is vitally important to the overall success of our students. In our perspective, multi-grade classrooms epitomize the successful integration of these factors. For the first time at Kennedy, we created a multi-grade classroom. We invited grades 2 and 3 students to join together. Students received direct small-group instruction, which is then reinforced through independent and student-led collaborative work time. Students take ownership of their learning and behavior and support their classmates in mastering school routines. Grade 3 students' self-concept as confident, capable leaders is enhanced through a perception of expertise, and our grade 2 students understand that in one short year, they will be responsible for teaching the younger students new to their learning community. Another way that we integrate academic and social skill development is through our cross-grade partnerships. We capitalize on our PK-8 structure to help students develop social and leadership skills. Our intermediate-grade students serve as reading and science partners for our youngest students. As reading buddies, our older students increase their fluency while reading aloud to primary students. As science buddies, they work together to harvest produce from our garden, then collect and store seeds, and finally plant seedlings in our garden each spring. Every morning, our middle-level students provide support to our kindergarten and grade 1 students and teachers. They deliver breakfast to each classroom, teach our youngest students how to open milk cartons, and support in cleaning up tables and floors. These helping relationships provide our middle-level students with the opportunity to develop empathy for others and see the value and importance of their role as leaders in our learning community. As a staff, we hold high expectations for our students and ourselves. We engage in reflective practice through collaborations during data teams and professional development. Our culture is one in which teachers, along with students, are invited to bring their own passions into the classroom. Some bring their love of song and dance, while others bring their zeal for science and robotics. Our climate survey data show that the overwhelming majority of our staff and students believe they are cared for, listened to, and respected. Kennedy is blessed with a gifted, passionate veteran staff. Our teacher leaders champion and created the majority of the initiatives that I've talked about tonight: flexible furniture, the smart room, the community garden, and our STEM initiatives. This year, our teacher leaders are facilitating most of our professional development. They also guide our whole staff book study on Yvette Jackson's Pedagogy of Confidence. Together, we are exploring the intersection of race, culture, and expectations, and learning instructional practices that support the high achievement of all students. Finally, we are a community who has fun together. We laugh at ourselves, we laugh with our students. We know that the work we do is serious business, and we give it our all every day, but we also never take ourselves too seriously. We care for each and every member of our community, and we find the joy in what we do. And now we have a video that I'd like to show you. Welcome to Kennedy Community School. Our school serves pre-K through 8th grade students, and we focus on engaging and inspiring the whole child. We do this by paying attention to students' physical, academic, and social needs. We incorporate movement throughout our day and in view arts throughout all of our classrooms. We also have a strong emphasis on technology, engineering, science, and math. At Kennedy, we are a LEED-certified school, so we spend a lot of time outside. We have prairies, rain gardens, and a community garden, and our students and our teachers bring learning into the outside. At Kennedy, we are offering students many options for flexible seating. Teachers were given resources and tools to use in their classroom that are allowing students to be engaged and focused while working on their tasks. In my classroom, I've seen a huge improvement with behavior as students are able to choose what works best for them and are making successful choices within our classrooms.
In physical education, we're trying to engage our students by offering a variety of activities, some that they can do a lifetime, like rollerblading or cross-country skiing, and activities that they might do on a team. And so we're also trying to engage students by using learning in the academic world and bringing it into the gym, and just keep our kids excited about what they're doing.
This year, I'm teaching a 2nd, 3rd grade multihed classroom, and one of the great things about this classroom this year was that everything is accelerated as far as getting started sooner with working on the academics, because I know students that from last year they were able to model and provide leadership for the newer students. One of the benefits of having those students over a two-year period is that I get to know them better academically and personally, so that I can individualize their learning.
Here at Kennedy, we have 5th through 8th grade orchestra, which is awesome, because we get to work with the kids both when they begin and then in the subsequent years of orchestra. I think the various arts give students a means to express themselves, and when they see others creating things and showing off skills that they've learned and expressing themselves through their art or their music, that can also be very inspiring towards other students.
I think it's a cool opportunity for kids to see people that are in the STEM fields rather than hear their teacher talk about this person does this and this person does that, this is what an engineer does, when they have the opportunity to talk to an engineer or scientist or a researcher that's actually doing some of that work. We have people from St. Joe, we have people from St. Cloud and Cold Spring to talk to these kids via Google Hangout, but we also have people from around the different NASA centers, friends and colleagues that I used to work with that are able to help those kids maybe ignite some of that passion and that energy to inspire them to want to learn more about that career and maybe want to do that someday.
I've joined robotics, and I'm starting on Thursday, and I'm really excited.
I'm working forward to be a science engineer and work on space robots, be a part of NASA.
Over the past year, our students have been in the Kennedy Community Schools multiple times observing teachers and then actually implementing lessons. Without Kennedy Community Schools, we wouldn't be able to prepare our teacher candidates in the best way possible. We know that the more we can get them in the real world and in real-life classrooms, the better we'll prepare them to be tomorrow's teachers.
Yeah, it's one thing to read about 3rd graders and textbooks and teaching materials, but it's another thing entirely just to be in the classroom and try new things with them, especially with computer science and coding.
The teachers, they really want you to succeed. They're really passionate about what they do as teachers, and they will take time out of their day to make sure that you fully understand the subject.
Easy to make friends here, because all the kids are nice and like they include you in everything.
Kennedy Proud!
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 Bruce? I wanted to get to say this before my friend Jerry Von Korf might say this, but I can't help but reflect, Jerry, back in February of 2004, when on a dark night in the winter that we were invited out to St. Joe by the mayor at the time, and they had some interest. Boy, did they want a school out there. They wanted their own high school, and they just wanted to be in some way, you know, unique to that, you know? So they were talking to us, and we listened and offered up some ideas and gave them some hope that, yes, you have some friends here that want to work for that too, that we see your vision. And we later on visited a couple of cornfields in the spring, and kind of thought where people thought we could go, and remember that place that you're at right now? Walked out there that first time and saw all of that land and all of those cornstalks out there, and just reflecting back on that, on the movie, you know, build it and they will come. What a great physical facility you have, but most importantly, what great staff and students and parents you have, and a great program that serves all of them. So it's really exciting to see this dream that was out there one time a long time ago now doing such wonderful things. Thank you. Shannon?
Lori, I do have a question on one of the slides that you showed. Can you bring that back up? It was kind of towards the end, and it was a technology picture. Yeah, click on that one, let me see. Yes, what is that on the paper, that little thing?
Sure, that's an Ozobot.
And I have no idea what that is.
Right, I didn't either, until some of our teachers and students helped me. They're little tiny computers that you code using different colored pens. So the different colors are actually giving the Ozobot directions, and so the students create programs. Jeff, do you? So it's a starter, it's a starter coding program. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Lori here? No, Lori, I'm wondering if maybe you'd like to give us a little example of the chicken dance?
I do have the video, so we can pull that up at any time, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm falling asleep over here, I'm not falling asleep, but. Yep, next up, we have Westwood Elementary School presentation from Principal Derek Branton.
Good evening Chair Dollgren and Superintendent Jeff and members of the Board of Education. I am thoroughly excited to be here tonight. I am pleased to present our school, Westwood Elementary School. We are Westwood Proud, home to 467 students. Our building is pre-K through 5, and our preschool program continues to hold a waiting Who are we? We are the home of the Wildcats. Our belief is that at Westwood, that students come to school every day to learn something new in a safe learning environment. We follow the Westwood way: to be safe, to be kind, to be your best, and to be a positive learner. The daily attendance rate at Westwood is 97%. Proactive attendance letters and meetings are held with families with attendance concerns. Less than 1% of our student population is being targeted for attendance concerns as of October 2017. The purpose, the why, the students. Our mission at Westwood is to create a year's worth of growth for all students in reading and in math. We continue to create social-emotional learning opportunities for our students to strengthen their personal development and capabilities. Our job at Westwood is to prepare them for future steps. Success starts now. We are implementing Avid in our grades 4 and 5. Avid's mission is to close the achievement gap, especially students traditionally underserved in higher education. Four of the fundamental pillars of Avid are instruction, culture, leadership, and systems. We have a very highly qualified staff. Our expectations for students is driven through care and compassion. We are student-centered, with high expectations for students for personal growth and achievement. We have 45 licensed staff members, average teaching experience of 25-plus years. Over 15 years have been spent at Westwood alone. Our total number of staff is slightly under 80, at 79. We at Westwood believe that we want to empower students, give them the authority or power to do something that creates change and that moves people. We at Westwood want to inspire. We want to fill them with the urge or the ability to do something, especially to do something very creative. We believe in teamwork and collaboration, the combined action of a group of people, especially when it's effective and efficient. Some of our key partnerships and characteristics that describe our partnerships at Westwood are supportive, rewarding, and service. Some of our local partnerships include the Apollo High School athletes and students and aides, local universities of St. Cloud State University, St. Ben's, and St. John's, America Reads, Catholic Charities, and AmeriCorps. Westwood's vision and focus for the 2017-18 school year is to make your mark. To be your authentic self, to be purposeful, to be passionate, to be committed, and to be a difference-maker. We want to empower students with critical thinking skills and capabilities to dig deeper into depths of knowledge with inquiry-based learning at Westwood. Some of our teacher development opportunities this year include mindframes, high operational teaching strategies, courageous conversations, and mindset and grit. Our demographics this year at Westwood look like 64% of our students are white, 11% of our students are Asian, 9.6% of our students are black, and 4.8% of our students are Hispanic. Our free and reduced lunch count at Westwood is 50%. Our fabulous kitchen staff does an amazing job of connecting with our students and making our café a family environment. Breakfast counts continue to grow each day. Recently, they served over 200 students in one morning at Westwood. Student growth and success. Last year, as measured by STAR, we had accelerated growth in grades 1st, 2nd, 4th, and 5th. As measured by STAR in math, we had accelerated growth in 1st, 2nd, and 4th, and all ethnic groups scored above 59% in SGP in math. Our special education- Our special education population at Westwood is 19%. This is the largest special education population of any elementary school in St. Cloud. Our EL population is 11.2%. Our access scores composites for listening, reading, speaking, and writing as measured in 2016, 49% of our EL students scored above 80% as measured by the access scores. Westwood services 55 students in our EL program. Westwood has been a PBIS exemplar school for the last five years. We were part of Cohort 1 with the state of Minnesota and have been a part of school-wide PBIS for the past 12 years. The PBIS framework is the foundation to the success of Westwood. Our monthly PBIS themes: kindness, responsibility, effort, self-control, attitude, fairness, cooperation, honesty, and pride. These words build our social-emotional structure at Westwood for all students. Our PBIS data shows that we average less than two behavior referrals each day. The remaining 2% are receiving either Tier 2 or Tier 3 interventions through proactive student plans with a behavior support specialist. At Westwood, our building has a differentiation specialist that works with selected grades in reading and in math while conducting school audit enrichment for all students. At Westwood, we have high achievement clusters in grades 2 through 5. These students are selected by assessments and teacher input for the high achievement clusters. We use both achievement and ability assessments to ensure equitable access for all students. These students have needs at different times. Flexible grouping is important. Students who are demonstrating proficiency and require additional challenges receive extra support from our differentiation specialist. The differentiation specialist also coaches our Knowledge Bowl team. This is an academic competition designed in a quiz bowl format. These are 5th graders. Knowledge Bowl is an after-school enrichment activity and recently, our Westwood teams placed 1st and 2nd at a MEADAC Kennedy. Westwood has a total of three Knowledge Bowl teams. Some of the success academically we attribute to our intense Tier 2 and 3 interventions. They're developed through a comprehensive MTSS approach that analyzes student data and concerns. We use research-based learning strategies to improve student achievement. Social-emotional development at Westwood is important. Focus work within the classrooms with responsive classroom and conscious discipline. There are multiple reasons for our success with the social-emotional learning. Our behavior resource support specialist provides positive and proactive breaks for students. We have communication between home and school, daily routines, a buddy system, and adult mentors to check in and check out with students as needed. Here's a sample of our September Students of the Month at the monthly assembly. These students were acknowledged in September by their classroom teachers for displaying outstanding behavior within the behavior trait of kindness. Parents are encouraged to attend the monthly assemblies and they take great pride in their students at these reward celebrations. Other routines that you might see at our assemblies would include singing the Westwood School Song. 5th graders acting out or singing out the next PBIS trait. And winners, of course, get a small prize and a fantastic lunch with the principal. Celebrations, we always want to celebrate the success of our students. Here's an example. Westwood students are being recognized at the Vera Russell Art Gallery at St. Cloud State University. The gallery showcases the work of young artists in pre-K through 12. These young artists have the opportunity to be recognized for their artistic works. And there are award winners from last year with our amazing art teacher. Our continued growth of new partnerships at Westwood is important. Recently, this past year, we have formed a relationship with Culvers of Wake Park and they have teamed with our building to promote three events this school year: An Pa for our Back to School Ice Cream Social, activities at our Fall Fest, and a Westwood Night at the local restaurant. Celebrations and honoring student success are important to our school culture. Students take great pride in our school and are eager to show off their enthusiasm. Westwood Wildcats rock. Our school community at Westwood is a fabulous learning institution, creating foundational learning opportunities and lasting memories. I have a video to show you.
My favorite part of my job is helping kids find books that will empower them to become better readers and develop a lifelong love of reading. I think the most exciting thing is when kids really connect with a book or with an author and then they keep reading and reading and are so excited and then eventually branch out onto other areas of topics they would like to read about.
We want our students to be 90% or higher in proficiency in reading and we work together to achieve those goals. And I'm able to do that in a small group setting when the students are really, really struggling. We develop skills that empower them to be able to read at a higher level than what they came to me at.
Our 2nd grade students today were doing multiple perspectives within our Depth and Complexity strand with our high achievers today. And what we're doing is just looking at two different ways stories can be told. We're using the Three Little Pigs, for example, of two different perspectives. This definitely empowers students to think creatively and think outside the box.
Empowering students at Westwood happens every day as we work in the art room. I'm lucky to see every student at Westwood and be there as they problem solve and they think outside the box and create using their brains in maybe ways that they don't in their classroom. Students can feel successful, students can achieve, and everyone can leave art feeling like they can do it.
I inspire students by helping them out with whatever they need help with, by giving them a high five or walking them to the nurse's office when they're sick, just being there for them when they need help with something and letting them know there's a person in the school, and there's many people, but being there for them in the school when they need help with something.
I get to love a lot of kids. I don't have to love them, I get to love them. Often, little people with special needs have so many needs, but it's my job to first create this incredible relationship with them before I teach them anything so that they know I'm a safe, trusting, loving person. And then, after I have that, then it's my job to go about the business of teaching. We keep them involved. We enjoy having them around. We know them by name. We know their moms or parents when they drop them off in the morning. We're family.
Yeah, we try and make breakfast and lunch the place to be when they come. Just, we're happy to see them, they're yelling our names, we greet them by name, they're happy to come to breakfast and lunch every day.
I inspire students by motivating them to be successful in school and in the classrooms. I help them reach their goals every day. I help them kind of fit in with everybody else in the school. It's a place for kids to come so they can take breaks when they need them. It's really motivating to see them all work together and to reach their goals in the end.
I like Westwood because it's really friendly, welcoming, and safe. The teachers care about us and I have a lot of friends here.
You can always have someone at your back when you're struggling through hard times and a teacher can always inspire you.
Westwood Proud.
Westwood Proud.
Westwood Proud.
Westwood Proud.
Westwood Proud.
All right, thank you Derek. Does anyone have any questions for Derek? Jeff?
That's not really a question, more of a statement. I just want to thank you for your job well done. As you know, I'm in your building often. I always see a common denominator in them that's passion and I think that comes from the top down, so kudos.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, just one comment to both Derek and Lori. I thought the presentations were excellent and I like the presentation style that you've used here. And I think Lori, as you started it off and you made the statement that this is really the rest of the story, too often we get bogged down in the data and the test scores and forget about the rest of the child and the rest of the education that goes on. And I think that your presentations did a good job of showing the passion of the staff and yourselves toward educating children and the great things that are going on in our school. So I would say congratulations and let's keep the format. I do appreciate also the background information we got that includes a lot of that data, but to hear the rest of the story and to see the kids, I think is a great job. So thank you.
Jerry?
I too enjoyed the presentation and we've, on committee, we had some discussion about the difference in emphasis and having the data in the packet and generally I agree with that. I have somewhat mixed emotions when a school comes before that has great, really great results and then the new format, this goes for both of you, kind of suppresses that. And as people know, I'm kind of a data rat and your reading and math scores have been going up off the charts in the last, since 2013. And so, you know, one sort of wants to flaunt that. And, but the new system kind of avoids that and I think, I think not without reason because these other things are tremendously important, but it would be nice if your people, the people you serve, were aware. And I see some nodding, but your reading and math scores are off the charts and congratulations for that part of it too.
Bruce?
Well, I was gonna say if anybody else had a comment first before I made another comment, but just one thing, I think the data is important also and I appreciate getting it as part of our packet. One of the questions I would have is the way that it is presented in the packet. It seemed to me, and maybe I just couldn't follow it closely enough, but that we didn't use the same benchmark graphs at both schools. In other words, in comparing, you might say, the same data. And I don't know if that's intentional or not. It seemed like some graphs might have had, you know, the left axis went up to 90% and at the other school, maybe 80% or 45 and 65 or whatever. And I don't know if that's the case, but I would just recommend that it's helpful, I think, for me as a school board member, as we're looking at this data, if we can be kind of seeing the same measurements for each school. Thank you.
And that might be partly the fault of the last committee meeting we had where we had a chart where the numbers were way up at the top and the differences were on that scale so tiny that you couldn't tell. And so, I guess it was me and I said, hey, could you, if it looks like that, could you move the scale so that we can see the differences? And, you know, it's kind of, you can't win, can you? But they do a great job.
Right, and I'm just saying, I think the, maybe nobody else feels that way, but the helpful thing to me would be, whatever it's going to be, that it be consistent from one school to the other.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Annika?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. How many students do you have total?
In the presentation, I put 467. I just got updated today. We're at 470 now.
And also, I would like you to tell us a little bit more about the Knowledge Teams. Like, if you can tell us a little bit more, what are they, how kids participate in them, what kids do get to participate in them? Does it work the whole year? If you can give us a little bit more about that, please.
As far as the Knowledge Bowl team, and yeah, we have a few additional young authors and young illustrators too. You know, those students are, I guess, kind of vetted out with some data in terms of 5th grade students that have the skill, ability, and willingness to want to be able to participate in an after-school activity like that. So we use test scores and some, I guess, some competitive kind of tryouts that way too, where kids get an opportunity to develop and participate that way. But it's usually if they want to participate at that point, most of them get an opportunity to be able to participate.
Anyone else? Billy?
In the conversation about data, so I just want to make sure that I throw something out there. In the audience, Dr. Sylvia Huff, I was watching her pen. So she was listening to the board discussion and I know that that's one thing that we're always trying to enhance, make it better, make it more understandable. So thank you for the comments because I saw her nodding her head saying, "We will incorporate." The other thing that I wanted to throw out there, and so, as superintendent, I get a chance to, one of the best parts of my job is to be in schools. And so these two schools in particular, when I looked at the presentation, it was great for me to be able to see what I experience every day when I walk into buildings. And our community doesn't get a chance to necessarily do that. They're reading something, they're listening to the radio, but they're not actually getting a chance to feel, they're not getting a chance to actually be part of. And the presentation, the part that I appreciated, was you're looking at students' faces, teachers' faces, people, people, and you're getting this feel of the atmosphere or the climate within buildings. So I wanted to say thank you for that. On a last note, there was a slide from Westwood and there was a young lady in the picture. And so earlier in the year, I shared a story with the board about a young lady, she was a 1st grader, not a 1st grader, a kindergartner. And let's just say she got misplaced on the bus on the very first day of school. Okay, so I think everybody kind of remembers that story a little bit. She's on one of those slides and she loves going to school to Westwood and her family is thrilled with her being at Westwood. And she was someone holding a Student of the Month deal there. And so I just happened to see that slide and that's just, if it's October, that's six weeks ago or so, where this young lady had a traumatic first day. And to this moment, to this day, she cannot wait to get on the bus. And to this moment, to this day, she cannot wait to get on the bus. She cannot wait to get to school. And she does have a bus buddy still, but she loves going to school. So that's just an example of what happens within our school system. So, thank you.
And I have, I mean, I have a similar story. Number one, I live out in the St. Joseph community, and I know how people feel about the school out there. And I never hear anything but positive comments about Kennedy and how wonderful that school is. And I mean, they just love it out there. And with Westwood, one of my employees, her son is a kindergartner at Westwood this year. And I know that he's been a handful the whole first five years of his life. I mean, it's been somewhat of a struggle for her. This year, I mean, when he started at Westwood, she says, "It's like a new kid. He's just, he's so engaged." She says, you know, "How long have we been in school now?" For three months. And she's just like, "I cannot believe how much he has learned so far, and his behavior patterns have completely changed. And he just, you know, he's engaged in things." And she has nothing, nothing but positive to say about Westwood. So, both schools are a great example of what District 742 is all about. So, thank you both for presenting. And next up, we have our Math and Science Vision Card presentation from Dr. Sylvia Huff.
Good evening, Chair Dogren, members of the board, Superintendent Jett. This evening, myself, along with Brooke Williams, the math coordinator of our district, and Dr. Karen Bankston, the science coordinator of our district, will be presenting the Math and Science Achievement Vision Card. Of course, we always start with our mission, as well as our why. And as you can see in the images, our students are actively engaged here in both science and math activities. Again, the purpose is to present to you the data from the most recent MCA assessment. However, as we go through the results and discuss the strategy for this upcoming year, we also want you to keep in mind that the data that you're hearing is just a snapshot of that testing experience that the students had last April. In our district, there are a number of initiatives and programs that take place, that take into account the whole child. And both Derek, as well as Lori, mentioned some of those initiatives. And so, all of that works in conjunction. And again, we just want you to frame it with that. We also want you to think about the different initiatives and programs that we'll be introducing tonight, as one of the purposes of this presentation is to lay the framework and establish some background information about these different programs and initiatives that you'll hear more frequently during presentations over the course of this school year. So we'll mention like co-teaching, for example. And during the school year, at another board meeting, you'll have more information provided on that particular initiative. For the agenda, we will first go through district highlights, followed by the achievement overview and the strategy for the current school year. We will begin with math and go through all of these items, and then stop for questions, and then proceed with science. So to begin with, the math district highlights. The first highlight that we chose to include looks at the performance of our Black students who are not eligible for free or reduced-price lunch compared to Black students who are not free or reduced-price lunch-eligible across the state. Our district is represented with the reddish-orange line and the state with the yellow. And the main takeaway here is that while the state has had somewhat of a steady decrease over the years for this particular subgroup of students, our district increased from 2016 to 2017. And where we were in 2017 not only exceeds where we started in 2014, but now also exceeds the proficiency rate for this particular group of students compared to the state. And Brooke is going to mention some of the things that we attribute this to.
There's just, there's a lot of things going on within the district. Like you've heard, CLR, our Culturally and Linguistically Responsive Teaching and Learning Initiative, AVID, which you heard a little bit about. We have tutoring programs in our schools. So there's a lot of things that work in conjunction. It's hard to know just specifically which one of those necessarily is responsible for those. But teachers are getting more comfortable with just the different things that have been happening over the years, too. And as they get more comfortable with things and implementing more of those strategies, we're starting to see an impact on our students. This particular population, I know we're gonna dig even a little bit further into and find out what buildings they come from, what grade levels they come from, and see if we can get some more specific information and narrow that down even more, because that's really exciting news.
Yes. And as you mentioned, we'll be watching this very closely, so that way we can stay on this upward trend. Our next highlight emphasizes the performance of our elementary immersion students. So these are our third through fifth grade students at Madison and Clearview. And for those students, their math proficiency rate was at 74.5%. And this is compared to the state's proficiency rate for third graders, which was at 59.9%. We also wanted to highlight the proficiency rates of our special education students at Oak Hill. As a district, our proficiency rates for our students who are eligible for special education services had a slight increase this year as well. But particularly at Oak Hill, we saw a substantial increase between 2016 and 2017, such that their proficiency rate rose from 26.3% to 41.9%.
And in talking with a couple of people from Oak Hill, one of the things that they've worked hard, they've been working hard at is the push-in model for their special education teachers, working within the classroom with the teacher versus pulling those special education students out of the room, just so that their learning is more connected to the learning that's happening there. They also work with Husky tutors that do work in the area of math, and their academic coach is also well-versed in math best practices. And they also did some, their testing environment, when the kids took the MCA, they really wanted to match what they were most comfortable with, when they took the STAR, when they took classroom assessments and so forth. So, for example, if they were pulled into that small group setting or a different room, they wanted to match that. So I said, "Well, try to remember everything that you did this year and see if we can duplicate those things for next year," because that was really, again, exciting for Oak
We also wanted to highlight the performance of our schools who had math proficiency rates that either met or exceeded the state's proficiency rate. And so, as you can see on the screen, Clearview, Kennedy, Oak Hill, and Westwood all had proficiency rates greater than the state's rate of 59.9%. Clearview's rate was at 66.4, Kennedy's at 63.9, Oak Hill at 64.8, and Westwood at And Kennedy also observed substantial growth for their students this year, which we wanted to include as a highlight. And Principal Putnam actually mentioned this during her school presentation as well. So for students who had scores in 2016 as well as 2017, where we're able to look at growth, 40% of those students were observed to have obtained high growth and 41% medium growth. So 81% of the students at Kennedy in fourth through eighth grade fell in the medium-to-high category. And just as a comparison, when looking across the state, 27% of students are identified as obtaining high growth and 44% medium growth. So now, we are going to transition into the math achievement overview and the strategy for the current school year.
So there are three key areas that we'll focus on to help ensure that our core resources, signified by the blue bubble there, are being used to their full capacity. And so, as you can see, there are data analysis, professional development that's happening, and curriculum and assessment. And on the slides that follow, you will see some of the trends happening in math across the grade levels. And at the end, I'll share out what we're doing this year in regards to these three areas. And again, like Sylvia had mentioned, this is really meant to be informational and provide insight and foundation into the math work that you'll hear about, as well as some other initiatives now and in the future.
So to begin with, we have broken out math proficiency rates by race. And you will notice that for both the Black, as well as the Hispanic populations, we have the overall category, as well as the category that looks at just the students who are English-language learners, as well as the students who are not English-language learners. And as you can see, there are some areas of celebration, but this data also tells us that there's work to be done. And so, we will be continuing to dig deeper into the scores, as well as looking at the programming. So you will hear more about this when Brooke talks more about the strategy. When we talk about the performance of our EL students, we know that it is best to look at it relative to their English, their level of English-language proficiency. Therefore, we like to present the data looking at access level, or MCA proficiency relative to their access level. And the Access 2.0 is an assessment that all of our EL students take. It's typically taken in January. And when they take this particular test, they are identified as falling into one of six categories. Level one is the category that basically means students are just beginning to acquire English language. And level six means that those students are proficient in English, that they have mastered the English language. Our district exits students out of the English language services at a 4.5. And that is in keeping with the recommendations of the state. So as you can see here, then, knowing that our students who score 4.5 are exited, by looking at the level-five students, it shows that of those students who scored at a level-five on last year's access, 12% of them were, excuse me, met on the MCA last year, and 35% of these students exceeded on the MCA. And that's exactly what we want to see. It basically shows that as our students are becoming proficient in English, they are meeting and even exceeding on the MCA and doing quite well on the assessment. This particular slide is a refresher on scale scores, because the subsequent slides will cover not only proficiency rates, but also speak in term of scale score performance. So just as a reminder, when the students take the MCA, each child receives a score between 1 and 99. Typically, the score is three digits, and the first number in the score coincides with the grade level. So a third grader could receive a score between 301 and 399. In order to be considered proficient on the MCA, meaning that the student is meeting or exceeding the target, the student must score a 50 or higher for their grade level. So anything 50 or higher is considered proficient. Scores 40 to 49 fall into that partially proficient, partially meets range, and those do not count towards our proficiency rate. So when we look at the average MCA scale score by grade level, you can see presented here that for the majority of our grades that are assessed in math, their average scores across the years tend to fall in that range between 40 and 50. In other words, the partially proficient gap. There are some exceptions, but for the most part, across the board, as presented in the table and on the graph, you can see that the average score tends to fall in that 40 to 49 range. And as I mentioned, since partially meeting the target does not qualify as proficient, we are doing the work that's necessary to get these scores into that proficient range and getting above that 50 target is our goal. In the upcoming slides, now with the background knowledge of the scale score, as well as the proficiency rates, you will see a combination, or all of this pulled together. So in the subsequent slides, the data will be broken out by both race, as well as category. So the categories are, FRL is the example presented on the screen, which stands for students who are eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. We have categories for students who are eligible for special education services, students who are EL learners, and students who are a combination of those. And you will also notice that the tables on those slides will be color-coded. Any row that is highlighted in green means that the average score for that particular group of students is at the meets or exceeds level, so 50 or higher. Any rows that are color-coded in yellow means that the average score for that group of students is at the partially meets level. And any row that is highlighted in red means that the average score is at the does-not-meets level. And the main takeaway that we want you all to have from these slides is that we have areas of celebration, but that there is work to be done. So let's start by looking at the third-grade MCA math performance. So as you can see on the screen, we have a table for each racial subgroup. And then, within those groups, we just have a representation of some of the different categories. So no classification would include students who are not eligible for free or reduced-price lunch, students who are not eligible for EL services, and students who are not eligible for special education services. We've also included the category of FRL-only. And included in this particular group are students who are only eligible for free or reduced-price lunch. Students who receive special education services or EL services would not be counted in this group. There are up to eight possible categories, and we have broken them out across the district and within every individual school for all of these different categories. And we have shared that data with the teaching and learning team, and we're doing the work necessary to make sure that we're targeting instruction for those particular groups. We've just provided a representation of a couple of the groups here to give you an idea of how we're looking at the data and using it. And so, as you can see, for example, if we're looking at our Asian third-grade students from last year who fell into the no-classification category, the average score for those students was a 358. And 60% of the students in that category were observed to be proficient on the MCA. For our white students in the no-classification category, as another example, had an average score of 362. And 86% of those students were observed to be proficient on the math MCA. This is what fifth-grade performance looks like. And also, as a note, the cells with asterisks just indicates that the sample size is too small to report here publicly. And in order to protect the identity of our students and their data, we have not disclosed that information. However, again, internally, we have the information to use it as necessary. And this is the data for our eighth-grade students across the district. And finally, for our 11th graders. And 11th grade is the final time that students are assessed with the MCAs for math. So now, I will turn it over to Brooke, so that she can describe some more of the strategy.
Okay. So at the beginning, there were three areas, and I'm gonna share some more information on those. And that the good news is, is that most every single one of the strategies, it keeps all of the students in mind. It's not just that we're targeting the students who are non-proficient, but the ones that are at grade level and above as well. And so, looking at data analysis, there are, in our elementary schools, buildings have teacher talks and data retreats going on. And that's where principals are meeting with teachers, teams, including other students who work within those, with the classroom teachers and with the students. And they're talking about how the kids are doing, they're looking at data, and they're coming up with a plan, so that all students in that class can be successful. As you heard, data teams are also happening twice a month. And that's where teachers have times, either as a grade level or as, at the secondary level, the departments meet, and they look at their standards. They really determine, you know, what do they need to learn out of this perhaps next unit, or, you know, next month, or whatever it is that they've determined there, is the length of time. And then, they're looking at, how will they know when the students have learned it, by doing some type of assessment? And then, talking about instructional strategies, and that's a little bit, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But those instructional strategies are geared at, okay, when students perform here, how are we going to help them grow? And that's regardless of their level. Also, looking at the STAR test, in order to progress, monitor students. And the district does have benchmarks where all students are taking that. And so, all students, again, regardless of their level, can be monitored to make sure that they're continuing to grow. And then, we also have an Alex program. And Alex is online, it's personalized learning program designed to have students working on math concepts that they are ready to learn. Because we know some of our students are in math courses that might be above where they're at, or they might have some gaps in their learning. And Alex is designed to find those holes and then have students working at their level. And the area of professional development, I've been working with all teachers K-12 on getting the message out there. And I know the board members heard some of this at the board retreat, about shifting from that focus on teaching those procedures to helping kids really understand the math behind the procedures. We want our students to be explaining more in math classrooms, just taking more of that initiative for their own learning. You know, I'll leave it at that. And K-12, also reflecting on, I've had teachers reflect on how their own beliefs, attitudes, and dispositions toward math influence the teaching of it. We all have some history of how we learn math and we're coming to the table. And how does that, in turn, if you're teaching math, how does that affect what happens in that classroom? And having, like I said, them reflect on that, because that, some of us have some deeply-rooted beliefs on that. Also, co-teaching is happening at all levels, and so teachers are given extra time to plan and meet the needs of students. And working with principals this year, we're doing some professional development. We've had a couple sessions so far. One is on the shifts. One is on the shifts and focusing from the procedure-based teaching to teaching for understanding. And most recently, we had one on supporting English learners in math and just to help with that, what to look for during those math walkthroughs. And then also, individual buildings have their leadership teams that are in charge of their professional development, and so there's a number of buildings that have requested math professional development. And then the third area was curriculum and assessment. This summer, teams came together and did quite a bit of work to help get this more tightly aligned. So we have a common scope and sequence, which means that the units that the teachers teach and when they teach them is aligned district-wide so that as students move from one school to another, it helps their experience be as seamless as possible before sometimes teachers would, you know, well, I like to teach this unit here and this unit here, and just to have that consistency for the student, especially when they're moving from school to school. Standards have been identified for each chapter, just our resources are Common Core-aligned, and in Minnesota, we don't have Common Core, but all of the resources are just because most states are. And so we just wanted to be really clear and help teachers know what to pull out for those chapters, and that will also help with their data team focuses. And so they have something called a chapter organizer for each of their units that will identify that focus for them. Supplemental lessons were also added to help meet the standards. And in K-5, there were standards-based assessments that were created to help teachers better monitor the rigor of the standards and how students are doing with that. Laura Stebner and I are working on identifying programming and identification protocols for our advanced students, especially when they are moving from elementary school into middle school, and we have some students who are doing exceedingly well in math and need to be accelerated, one, maybe two grade levels. And so just letting the counselors know, you know, what is going to be the protocol for that? What are we going to look at? And we're looking at how some other districts, and in fact, we'll be meeting tomorrow if there's not a snowstorm or something on that. So that's exciting. And then at Tullahie, we have an English Language Math Literature pilot going on just to support our English language learners. Kelly Frankenfield and I are working with the teachers there, and that involves the English language teachers going in and doing math lessons with literature. And so they're getting to learn these math concepts through content, through some type of a story, something that they can visualize and see. And then at the high school level, for our SLIF students, so our students with limited or interrupted formal education that are first year in our country, and they come in as a ninth grader or a 10th grader, and what does that first course look like? And so we're working on some things that were developed out of New York, and we're modifying them as we need to, and we're looking at how they relate to our standards and how can we compact curriculum for them for their kind of six-year plan as they graduate. And then finally, we're looking at the Number World Intervention Program, which was purchased at the elementary level, and we're identifying how to best use that with our special education students, perhaps our English language students, and how might we give some of our classrooms' students who might need some of that as well access to those materials. So as you can see, most of what I talked about is going to benefit our high-achieving math students as well as supporting those who need to accelerate their growth. And we know that it's going to take some time to achieve this because some of the things we're talking about do take a lot of time, and they take professional development. But we're confident that when you look at the research and the best practices out there, when I talk with Kelly about EL strategies for our English language learners, when I talk to Laura Stebner about our students who are exceeding, when I talk to Karen about science stuff, it is all the same strategies that we're talking about. And that's the exciting piece, is that nothing conflicts with each other. And so I'm excited to kind of dig in, but yes, it will take some time.
Questions about math data and strategy?
Bruce, thanks for that presentation. It's excellent to see that not only are many of our students doing very well in math, but we have a strategy, many strategies, for helping students who are not doing well in math and to help kids who are doing well in math even improve their performance better. You mentioned as one of our strategies, teacher talks, but I don't think we mentioned goal-setting by students and parents. Do we do goal-setting for math in our start-of-the-year goal conferences with parents? I've actually had the chance to sit in on teacher talks, both at Kennedy and at Madison, and it was just so impressive to see teachers come to these meetings with data showing the growth of their students and who needed extra help or intervention strategies for helping those kids. But I really think that one of the great things that we do as a district, that our staff does as a district, is in meeting with parents and students at the beginning of the year and setting goals for improvement, and then following those up with these meetings to both parent-teacher conferences to look at those goals, but also teacher talks to strategize how to help all kids improve. So we might want to consider putting that as one of our strategies too, by the way, because I certainly think that's a tremendous.
The goal-setting conferences?
The goal-setting conferences. Monica?
Thank you for your presentations. So Dr. Hoff, Hoff, sorry, I always pronounce wrong. So Dr. Hoff, one of the slides that you're talking about, the averages compared to the state, is that all student population? I can't find it right now.
For the four schools, Clearview, Kennedy, Oak Hill, and Westwood?
Oh, yeah, so it was, yes, I think that is that one toward the immersion versus immersion in the state.
So the immersion versus the state are just the third through fifth-grade emerging students at Clearview and Madison, and it's compared to third-through-fifth-grade students statewide. The state isn't specific to emerging students because we don't have the data to identify who the emerging students are across the state.
Okay. And in the one that you compare schools with state, how is that comparison being done?
For the four schools?
Yes.
That is all schools for Westwood, Oak Hill, and Clearview, and for Kennedy, it's just their elementary schools because it's being compared to the elementary rate across the state.
Okay, thank you. Now I have another question for math intervention. You said that some buildings have asked for math intervention, math professional development. What buildings are those?
The math intervention? Oh, for the various professional development?
Yeah.
Westwood is one of them, and that's ongoing. We actually have kind of a series of them. Oak Hill, I've done some work at South. There's an upcoming one at Tech. It hasn't happened yet, but in December. Discovery has them kind of planned out. Okay, they have not contacted me yet. Laurie said McKinley will be contacting me, but I haven't heard from them yet.
Okay. And the other thing is that in conversations outside as a board member with teachers in general, not only teachers from this district, but college teachers and actually later in conversations with union people, teachers tell me that one of the things that they in general dislike most about administration in general is when we tie flexibility about their curriculum and the way that they teach, the flexibility about how they do their curriculum. So I'm wondering how, if you have had any experiences or reactions, or maybe the principals can tell me about teachers, when you said that you're managing their curriculum and kind of wanting them to teach in certain order to align with other schools and how those conversations go?
I haven't had any feedback regarding the order. Last spring, actually, we started at our BCR Building Content rep, we started the conversation, and it actually went back to schools, I want to say, at least two times where they were supposed to go back to their buildings, give their input. They brought them back to the BCR meeting. We literally made tables of what every school, like, was suggesting for the order of the units. We can't honor, you know, everybody's obviously, but in thinking of, and this rationale was shared with them, but in thinking of, you know, the students and if that high mobility rate as students move from school to school, for the good of the students, you know, can we come up with something that, okay, it might not be my first choice, but yeah, I guess, you know, it makes sense. So we did bring it back, sorry, we did bring it back to the buildings at least two times during the spring before those determinations were made. And in the summer, I don't think there were any changes that didn't actually come from the buildings. It wasn't me deciding that order.
So you mean it's teamwork?
Yes, yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, I just had a question. One of your slides, you were talking about the SPED students where you kept the para in the room with the classroom, great results. Is that district-wide?
That's the message district-wide, to try to, and that's actually the special education teacher themselves, not the para, but yeah. Just because the research has shown that the more that we can keep the kids within the classroom and working, that they get better results versus being pulled out, maybe learning something completely different, you know, then they're learning kind of twice as much sometimes. They hear it one way in the classroom and something different's going on in their pull-out class, and they feel very disconnected. And so the more connected we can make that for kids, the better.
So is it district-wide?
Yes, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, there are some situations where there might still be, you know, a rationale for a pull-out situation. I don't know, Laurie, if you can think of some, but I know the overall message is that.
And I'm wishing that Carol Potter was here to talk more specifically about that, but one of the goals of special ed is that we do more push-in and exactly what Brooke was saying. And we've shown you several times how our special ed rates have really been increasing over the last couple of years, and Carol talks often about how she attributes a lot of that to the fact that our special ed students are in the classroom, they're hearing the same vocabulary, they're having the same examples, they're having those really rich discussions and conversations with their peers. There are some students who, based on their IEP, still need pull-out direct services, but for the most part, the goal is that our special ed teachers are going into the classrooms as much as possible.
Shannon?
The line chart that you showed at the beginning with the huge increase, I would love to hear a follow-up of what you found out about that.
Jerry?
A question and a comment. The question is, I know that we've been doing a lot of co-teaching in reading. Can anybody guesstimate the relative quantity of co-teaching resources that you're getting in math? I mean, it's personnel-intensive to do co-teaching. Where are we on how much co-teaching is going on in reading and how much is going on in math? Does anybody know?
I can say at the middle level, it's going on in math and reading, and that's been going on for a couple of years, I know for sure. And high school, now is it mostly this year that it kind of took off in high school? Because now they actually have the release days.
How about if I take it over?
Yeah.
So at the elementary, our primary focus to get co-teaching started has been in reading. And like you said, it is very cost prohibitive at this point for us to do as much co-teaching as we'd like in math. We're also looking at expanding. Right now, we don't have co-teaching at all of our elementary schools, but we're increasing the elementary schools that have co-teaching. So our first emphasis was on reading co-teaching, getting teachers used to co-teaching, and looking at the scheduling of how to have co-teachers in the classrooms as often as we would like them to be. I think we've talked before about we would love to see co-teaching expanded because it's something that we are seeing really good results from within our district. At the middle school, they have co-tod in both reading and math, not in every class. And again, it goes back to our staffing and what staff we have available to meet, especially in both EL and special ed, to meet those requirements that we have for the IEPs. At the high school, they have done some co-teaching, but at the high school, but it has not been a consistent effort. This year, we have invested in co-teaching in math and in language arts in many of our high school classes and are investing in the professional development. Something we want to expand is with math as well.
There's a movement that Bruce Hentges knows about to do something about the cross-subsidies, and I started trying to calculate what we could do in Minnesota if we had no cross-subsidy. And we could blast co-teachers, you know, into every classroom, and we could afford four, five years of full summer extended learning. And all of that we would do if we just didn't have these deficits. And sometimes we concentrate on the deficit, but there's some wonderful things we could do if we had the money that the deficit represents. My comment relates to this. I've got a kid who's involved in a math project, and they use Russian teachers translating the Russian system into English and then turning it into something that can be used by teachers. And so he's been over to this group of Russian teachers that they employ who are getting, you know, off-the-charts results. And one of the things they're doing is what you described, is all the way through teaching. But the other thing he said is that in order to build the pyramid of knowledge, not procedurally, they've argued that you have to be very intentional about what comes first and what comes second. And that if you teach it procedurally without trying to understand what you're doing, then you can treat, you know, you could do factoring before you do, you know, long division, I guess, but if you're gonna have to learn. And so he said the thing that really struck him as he spent some time with these very successful programs in Moscow and Leningrad, what I call Leningrad, that there is a huge amount of work from the curriculum people trying to make the things fit together so that you don't learn this until you learn the things that you need to know. And whether that applies here or not, and it certainly probably doesn't apply as much to science or reading or literature, but maybe it does in mathematics.
I think there's definitely something to that, and I think we see it when our English language students come over too, when they are older, and we're trying to immerse them and give them the core, you know, the main class that they would be in, and it doesn't work because there are so many concepts that you have to have before you can engage in algebra, for example.
Jeff?
Just a curious follow-up question. Does Westwood or Kennedy do any co-teaching?
Let's move on to science.
Okay, so once again, we are going to start with our district highlights. And the first highlight that we have included here shows the proficiency rates of fifth-grade students, and this is between 2014 through 2017. So these are different cohorts of students each year, but you can see that since 2015, we have been steadily increasing the proficiency rate of our fifth-grade cohorts, and the proficiency rate in 2017 is now higher than what it was in 2014. Similarly to the math highlight, we wanted to include the proficiency rates of our schools that had rates that met or exceeded the state's proficiency rate. And here we have Clearview, the fifth graders at Kennedy, because in science, students are only tested in fifth grade, eighth grade, and high school, so they're assessed three times, and at Kennedy, there are fifth graders and eighth graders. So this is specifically looking at their fifth graders. Oak Hill and Westwood. So you can see that the state's proficiency rate for fifth graders was at 60.9%. So you can see that the state's proficiency rate for fifth graders was at 60.9%. And ClearView was at 75%. Kennedy's fifth graders at 72.4%, Oak Hill at 64.1%, and Westwood at 74.4%. Again, we wanted to also highlight the performance of our immersion students now looking at their science performance. And this is just fifth grade. So fifth graders at ClearView in Madison, their proficiency rate was at 74.4%. Again, compared to the state's proficiency rate for fifth graders, which was at 60.9%. A very exciting highlight for us is the one on the screen right now. And it's because we've been waiting to have enough data where we could actually look at cohorts over the years. Since the MCA transitioned from two to three, we've been waiting for our eighth graders to get to high school so we can see how their performance is being compared since they're only assessed a few times in science. So the red bar is representing the proficiency rate when these particular students were eighth graders in 2014. And the yellow bar shows their proficiency rates when they took the test in high school. Mostly, students take it sophomore year, but it's really whatever year they take biology. The high school MCA assessment is aligned to the biology course. And so what this graph shows is that for this particular cohort of students, when they were in the eighth grade, their overall proficiency rate was at 41%. And when they took the MCA in high school, that proficiency rate has increased to 60.9%. And also, when you look at it broken out by race, we see that the proficiency rate increased between eighth grade to high school for these students in every racial subgroup. And the number of students included in this that we had data from eighth grade to high school was 463 for this particular set of students. And just to make sure that that wasn't a fluke, we also looked at the cohort of students who were in the eighth grade in 2015 compared to their high school scores in 2017. And so for this particular cohort of students, which consisted of 482 children, the overall percentage when they were in eighth grade was 41.5%. And in high school, their overall proficiency rate had increased to 56.8%. And once again, when we're looking across the different racial subgroups, we're seeing an increase in their proficiency rates across the board between eighth grade and high school. So now we are going to transition into our science achievement overview and strategy.
So similar to what Brooke did for math, we picked three key areas to focus on when talking about core instruction and the strategies that we're using to engage all students in science learning. Those categories for science are relationships, professional development, and rigorous expectations. And after the overview, I'll be going into some of the detail on those aspects.
So once again, we start off by looking at the proficiency rates of our students broken out by race. And for Black and Hispanic students, we have also separated that out by our English language learners and non-English language learners. When we look at performance come, and looking at scale score, with 40 again being the target for partially proficient, but 50 being where we want our students to be because that's the threshold for proficiency. Again, for fifth, eighth grade and high school across the years between 2014 to 2017, we find that the average score for these grade levels tends to fall in that partially proficient And when we look at the interaction of race and classification or the different categories, we see a picture that is somewhat similar to what we reviewed for math. And so again, here, for example, if we look at our fifth grade students who are Hispanic or Latino, who fall into the no classification category, their average score was a 563. And 75% of these students were observed to be proficient on the MCA. Here are the results for eighth grade. And here are the results for high school. And again, this is typically 10th grade, but it is whatever year the student takes biology.
Now I'll go through some of the strategies, specific strategies in each of the areas that we highlighted previously. So the first area of relationships, I wanted to highlight some of the aspects that are both outside and inside of the district itself. So one of the partnerships that we have, have enjoyed for several years is the St. John Outdoor University Partnership, where field trips are provided consistently each year for students, as well as resources and training for teachers both pre and post field trip. And it is aligned with the, the state standards and curriculum that's provided in those grades. At the high school level, the high school program committee is currently meeting to talk about how are we moving forward with high school programming? And Leah Sands, the CTE coordinator, and I have really made an effort to focus on STEM as a unit, to look at the practical aspects of career readiness and, and college readiness beyond high school. Across K-12, we're really looking at strengthening both teacher and program relationships across buildings, having those conversations about what is it that we do to help students experience and understand the content that we're trying to teach? And not just activity-based experiences, but the content itself, and exploring all of the different activities that are options. At the K-4 level, we're really looking at understanding the contributions of each level's curriculum and how they contribute to the MCA. So at fifth grade, it's a comprehensive test. So what is it that a kindergarten teacher is actually laying the foundation for, for fifth grade success? And going through each grade level. This is also being done at the middle school level because again, the eighth grade test is a comprehensive test throughout middle school. So what is it that sixth grade contributes? And what do eighth grade teachers need to focus on? Because each of the grades are specialized in different areas. The next area that I'd like to focus on is professional development. So for K-12, we've really been working, last several years, on strengthening the, the access to curriculum resources, both online and materials for all teachers. And we need time and have taken the time to explore and look at how are we implementing those different resources? In particular, the online resources for differentiation, be it special ed, EL, accelerated, et cetera. And then also assessment, and not just summative assessments, but formative, to have both the students and the teachers have conversations about understandings and experiences. Also, the materials use. There are issues surrounding science because of safety. When you have 30 students working on particular projects, what is it that we need to be aware of? How do we engage students and scaffold their understanding of how to handle materials and look at results? Again, across K-12, we're also looking at best practices for a thoughtful classroom, really focusing in on increasing student talk and higher-level thinking skills to have those application of knowledge conversations so that the content becomes more real. Similar to math and the other content areas, we're doing K-12 principal walkthroughs. As a content specialist or coordinator, I'm walking with principals, sitting down in classrooms, seeing how students are interacting and learning in science content and having conversations about what is best practice? What should we be looking for? What are missed opportunities? But also the strengths in each of the classrooms. And lastly, across the state of Minnesota, there is a focus on the National Cross Cutting Concepts and Practices of Scientists and Engineers, which was published, the framework was published in 2012. And it's really something that the Minnesota Department of Education embraced immediately. And so we've been working diligently to really have conversations about what are concepts in science that go K-12 into math, into literacy, into communication, et cetera? And what are the practices of being a scientist and an engineer? Lastly, I wanted to talk about the rigorous expectations. And really, as we talk throughout all of our work, is having access to core science standards and experiences for all students, because that is our focus as a student. Looking at the scope and sequence work, we also did quite a bit of work K-12 this past summer and, which has been ongoing for several years now, to look at, having conversations about not only when particular units are being taught, again, to, to make student experience more seamless if they do need to change buildings, but also talking about what does student engagement mean? What does it look like? How do we assess that? How do we check in? How do the students understand that with a growth mindset? So really looking at varieties of activities, but also experiences and conversations. We're also looking at course alignment between buildings and teachers. Again, with those relationships that I talked about earlier, strengthening when we all do better, we all do better, you know, having those conversations. And then at the K-5 level, really talking about how science could be used as a context for content teaching. So making those content connections. We've had conversations about how wonders itself, the, the curriculum for literacy in, in the K-5 buildings is set up on either science or social studies units. So how can we use that as a venue to, to really strengthen both science and literacy? And then Brooke and I continually talk about how we're teaching the same thing in science and math. For instance, patterns, that's, that's a universal concept. At the 912 level, there is ongoing program support for meeting the, the state requirement for high school graduation in either physics or chemistry. And how do we provide that for all students that graduate from 742? And again, back to our why, really providing a learning context for all students to interact with the world around them and understand and experience the concepts that we are included in science. Questions?
Bruce?
First, first of all, thank you. Thank you very much for, for these presentations. You know, I've been here long enough to, to have a, a reflection on, on how these conversations or these presentations have been going over the years. And this is, Mr. Superintendent, these last couple of years, these conversations are as deep and as reflective and as investigative as anything I can remember. It's just grown to a great level of professional dialogue on, on these presentations here. So I, I address that to you and of course, that way it's addressed to everybody, but thank you. An observation here first, and, and just kind of piggybacking on what I just said, what I'm just hearing more and more of in this district when it comes to these conversations, science and mathematics and proficiencies and things of that sort, are, the, the conversations are, are more moving away from our deficits into our assets. We're identifying assets because we have them more than we've had. Deficits to assets is one transition. Scarcity to abundance is another kind of narrative in these reports that you're giving. And, and then what I'm hearing oftentimes, more than ever, is, are the connections of rigor and relationships and results. And I might just maybe put in another thing in there too. I think there's an echo of relevance in all of this too, that things are becoming related to each other and irrelevance to each other. So rigor, relevance, relationship, and results are becoming part of the foundation of these conversations. That's my, that's my observation. I'm just gonna take a crack at something here. And it just, this is just purely out of curiosity. If I just look at the math proficiency rates by race and the science proficiency rates by race, and if I look at those two, those two graphs, for anybody else that wants to look at that, page 61 and page 82. We've got 10 groups there and we, we have bookends here on either end. They're identified on the graphics right here as to what those races are. The bookends on both sides, ends of these things. If I were to go into our advanced placement classes and look, just walk around and look at those students that are in rigorous and in curriculums, studying hard, being challenged very much, are those classes, by your best estimation, are they looking like those two bookends mostly? If they are, can I just ask this question out of curiosity, please, to anybody? And if this is, Mr. Superintendent, if this is not, if I'm not supposed to go here, somebody jump in, Lori, whatever. But if we look at those in the middle, Black, Black EL, Black non-EL, Hispanic, Hispanic EL, Hispanic non-EL, American Indian, two or more, while those proficiency columns are low, lower than our bookends, it means that there are persons in each of those that are proficient. Proficient as proficient as anybody else is proficient. Proficient is proficient. Are we intentionally reaching down and grabbing those kids? And, well, not dragging them, but just motivating them and getting them into these classes, to these advanced placement? Is there a way, is that, is, is there something there? Help me now, Mr. Superintendent. Where am I going that I shouldn't be going or whatever?
You're going just fine. And the, the dragging, there's moments in time, I'm good with dragging. But I'm going to turn that question to that, someone to speak to that. Lori?
Thank you.
And I think Superintendent Jett saw me eagerly wanting to push this microphone. You are exactly right. And it's something that we are very aware of and very cognizant of and want to make changes in. It's a key focus for our talent development program. So you heard both Lori and Derek talk about our young scholar programs, our differentiation programs. That is a key focus for us, is we know that we have a lot of students who have not been served at our highest levels and we want to make sure that they are. So we're really looking at all of our students. You heard, Lori, you've heard Brooke and Karen talk about, we're looking at what they can do and looking at the potential of our students and providing supports so that our, our representation in our high-level classes will be more representative of our demographics. It's a huge goal for us in talent development and equity and teaching and learning.
And Mr. Moes, just to add to that, when you look at our strategic plan, when you look at things that are, that are identified, one of the words you always see throughout our strategic plan is "all."
All.
No matter what, all. And our, our, our teaching and learning department, I can't say it any better than Lori did, but that is an emphasis for us, "all."
I love that word, "all." And I, and I keep thinking about that all the time, about how do we, how do we get all of our kids deliberately, intentionally, go find them? You are capable of taking this class and we're gonna put you in there and we're gonna, you're gonna succeed and this is where you belong and it's rigorous, but you can handle rigor. And it's relational and you'll have all the support you need. And the results are gonna be what is our dream and your dream. I just really hope that I'm, that, that that's gonna be out in our narratives in the future. Otherwise, this is just really, really great. Thank you very, very much.
And I would like to add to that, that it's not just teaching and learning, but it's also the teachers at the ground level with the students having those conversations already.
Absolutely. I was thinking of-
So I wanna, I wanna make sure that they, they're highlighted in their work.
I was thinking of that during our, our previous school reports, is that we can, we can identify potentialities early and channel these kids into these, into these areas of success and that rigor.
And I just want to say firsthand that, that actually happened on a couple of kids last year and Laura Stubner and I met on a couple regarding math. And one of them was kind of through the Young Scholars Program. And even though the test scores, right, weren't exactly maybe where they were, maybe that student didn't test as well and for whatever reason- student didn't test as well, and for whatever reason, we know. But they were actually very much so encouraged and talked to about, and that you can do this. And so we are starting to see those students and teachers identifying them, and that's really exciting.
Thank you very much. Jerry?
Couple of things. For years, we've been talking about reaching down, and as Bruce has talked about, and I often think about these kids as if they were husky hot, is it husky hot dogs, do we call them, the basketball hot shots? Excuse me. But I mean, the basketball coach goes down and gets them, right, and finds out. And so part of it is the math people and the science people, they need to go down and get them, too, because if they want a class of twenty-five, twenty-eight kids, just like if they want a team with lots of kids, they need to be part, the math people and the science people, they need to be part of student development in the lower grades. The other point I want to make is that I think there's a fair amount of research that says that if you grab some kids who in junior high have the intellect and the capability, but for whatever reason aren't 100% proficient, that if they go into an AP course, just like, remember when you talked about the kids that go in the math classroom or the reading classroom and pick up the vocabulary, that if they stay with it and you stay with it, with them, that they do far better in that really hard class where lots of hard work is, challenging work is going on, where they might not get the A-plus, but nonetheless, they do way better than they would do in a class that's less challenging, where they might get an A. And that that also involves an accommodation on the part of the teacher, who's, because some people teach AP because it's the gift of having all of my kids really ready, and if I'm going to do this other strategy, then I have to differentiate and accommodate and push a little differently. And so I think, I mean, I hear that going on, but I think all of those things are working together. And I just wanted to mention, we had the columns together, and we had the black scores compared to the other scores, but that's an example of the black scores being more than half ELL students. So it's, I mean, it's a valid comparison, but I just don't want people to get the idea when they, when they compare that, that it's not really an apples and oranges comparison. There's nothing you can do about that, but other than make twenty columns instead of ten, but I just want to make that point.
Billy.
Just to address what the conversation was here, I just need to make a quick comment, because I know that what the words or terminology that we're using, there was no malice to end to any of it. And so, reach down. So I'm looking at my elementary folks that are out here.
Yep, I meant grades, not-
Like I said, there's no malice whatsoever. I'm just making sure that I'm going to use the terminology that we use, okay? And so in the, and I have a coach, one of the elementary, the Westwood principal is a, is a former athlete, he's a volunteer coach, and so I'm going to use his terminology. Talking about an entire program, so at the elementary level, we could use the term cultivating the young ones, biddy ball, okay? The youth programs, okay? And so you, you go into those, and our elementary principals know that they're at the, they're at the foundation, they're at the core. And you're looking at what the end product is going to be when they're in twelfth grade, when they get through your program. And so all we're all saying is that you're cultivating and you're going, and you're, I'm going to use the term recruiting, okay? You're recruiting down at the, nope, not, not down, at the beginning, okay? And see, I'm falling into it, too. In the beginning, you're looking at your entire program, anybody that is part, whether it's preschool, whether it's kindergarten, first grade, and you're looking for talents. You're looking for someone's individual talent and what they can become, and you're trying to cultivate that, so that by the, you get them, and that by the time they get ready to get through your entire program, that product at the end is what we're all talking about. So I just, when that conversation was going on, I looked at the word that Bruce wrote down, and he's had recruiting, I had the word recruit. I looked out there, and the coach was sitting there getting excited about it because he was thinking about biddy ball and things like that. And so we're all talking the same thing.
Chair.
I would say you have a strong feeder program.
That's it. So one of the things that I've always appreciated about, about being here on these evenings is that, you know, this is a classroom. This is a classroom, looks like a council chambers. At one time, it was a gym. I used to run around in here when I was a kid, and that, but nonetheless, it's a classroom, and classroom is where teaching and learning takes place. And I was just taught, and I'm just really appreciative of that. I was just taught, I just learned, I was instructed and informed and inspired here just very shortly ago about how to be careful about words. And now I, now I know that, and you know that, or my heart was in that. And I'm so grateful for just the chance to admit publicly that we are learning up here all of the time. They call us board members, we are, but we're students. And teachers come to us and teach, and we learn, and we grow that way so that we can govern better. Thank you very much.
Monica.
I have a question here about page sixty-two, and also I'm looking at the pages two simultaneously with the page eighty-two. And so I'm looking at the proficiencies of everybody. And the sixty-two gives me the gains in the specific students, which are, oh, so the district highlights in the MCA Science Cohort Performance, when you compare eighth grade with high school, or when you compare eighth grade with high school two thousand sixteen or fifteen, in either one of those. But then when I look at the science proficiency rates by race, so I'm struggling to, I'm struggling to figure out when, when are these bars are going to get high? In how long are they going to get to that 50% or more, the ones, especially the ones that are very low? And if I look at the, at the proficiency rates, when you're looking at the cohorts, I see gains, but I see, but I see gains that are significant, but not enough. So, so if you can tell us a little bit more about strategies, and I don't want to take us everybody down, but I had these questions before.
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're talking about how science proficiency rates by race, when we do all of them together, are still lower, but when we do the cohort, we do see growth, or the other way around, we see growth, but there are still, is work to be done. It's still not as high as we would like. And that's the pieces that we're focusing on and looking at how to approach. We have several pieces of it, for instance, on the-
Sorry about that. So when we're looking at the proficiency rates, one of the things that we consider is the way that science is being taught. So for instance, the average MCA Science Scale scores, you'll notice that there is a dip, dip in eighth grade, and that might be a piece that you were looking at as well. That in middle school, science is taught, sixth grade, physical science, seventh grade, life science, eighth grade, earth science. The test is an integrated test, it's all three subjects in one test. So it's different in that fifth grade is an integrated class. A fifth grade science class has all of the subject areas on, in it, so it's, it's experiences that students have on a regular basis. Whereas a high school test, where you see a raise again, it's a biology test, it's nature of science and biology are the focus items on the high school MCA test. So that's one piece that we're looking at. The other piece that we have considerations of is that the science standards will be under review at the state level next year. And so we want to make sure that we're supporting teachers and understanding what they are teaching, but we do not want to look quite yet at huge programmatic changes until we understand where the state is headed. So I don't mean to skirt around your question, but it's a consideration that we're trying to make sure that we have those conversations about what we're thinking now, so that we have a basis of where we're going to head once the state lands on what the new standards may or may not look like when they're, when the review is done. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but in terms of black students, for example, which are the ones that are in the lowest, or black EL, or Hispanic EL, so I see grow, and I see significant grow from eight percent to 10%, is, I mean, to 18%, which is very significant, but, but it's still 80%. So-
Willie, did you want to jump in?
Sure do. And so I'm, I'm not going to skirt around the question, or, because that's what you, you said you skirted around, but you didn't skirt around, okay? So just so you know, I'm going to address what I think I heard. Your exact quote was, "When will we see it?" Okay? When will we see, so in other words, you wanted to know a date and time. And so my answer to that is, so I'll make it personal. My want or my need, if I'm answering that question, is tomorrow. So, okay? I'm just getting there. My want or my need, that's me. The want or need with anybody that is teaching, or the administrator, and here in the board, the want and the need is actually yesterday, so I said tomorrow, but it's actually now. But what I do know, and what we are continually working on, is that we finally see gains. It's not going the other direction. We are actually seeing gains. And we know that we are making progress, and we're trying to make sure that we monitor and figure out what progress we're making, how we're making it, can we replicate it, and then can we accelerate it? That is what we're trying to do. So to give you the exact answer of when we're going to see it, that's a tough question. But in terms of what we're doing to get to that so that you can see it, we're working at that extremely hard. And if we're comparing what we do compared to surrounding us or others throughout this state, we do it better than they do. I'm proud of that. But in my gut and in my core, it's not fast enough. And it's not fast enough in anybody, it's not satisfactory for us. That's my answer to that.
Jerry?
I just can't resist giving my commercial for where I would put the special Ed Crest subsidy money if we had it, because the research that Bruce Tentis put us onto says that if you take these kids through a summer program for a full summer, they pick up three tenths of a year of gain. If you did that for four years, I'm talking about Minnesota now, I'm talking about Minnesota waking up and, and putting a little more, not, it's not a ton of money, but putting enough money in so that in addition to the great work that teachers are doing during the day, and all of the effort that they're making, that we gave them a break by, by giving kids the opportunity who, who deserve to have some catch-up, you know, hundred, two hundred million dollars would do the whole state. And then I think we would begin to see a marked, marked change.
You know, I would, I would make one comment, and that is that kids can learn a lot at a really young age if they have a reason or a want to learn it. And you can just look at what they do with computers, what they do with Facebook, how quickly they learn Facebook, inside and out, Snapchat, how to use it, I mean, all of these different things, they pick it up almost intuitively because they want to learn it. And in the Kennedy presentation, Lori made a statement that I thought was shocking, kind of, that, and I think, if I heard you correctly, you said that in one class, 60% of the students signed up for a robotics program. Okay, quarter of the middle school signed up for robotics, okay. So it wasn't sixty, okay, but a court, 60 students is where I got the 60. But that, I mean, that's an incredible number of students, and I, and I really do believe that in math and science, if you get them involved in robotics, if we took, if we, you know, we looked, we looked at immersion students, and we said, here's how the immersion students are doing in math and science, and they're outperforming. If we, if we had a way of saying, here's the robotics students, or the students that are involved in robotics programs, and how they're doing in math and science, I bet that number would be close to 90 to 100% proficient, because it gives them a reason to want to learn math and science. To be good in robotics, you have to know it. And I mean, those programs, I think, are just incredible programs for driving math and science programs within the schools.
Mr. Javon.
Just maybe a comment to the question, when will we see change? I think that nobody in making these presentations is trying to make the case that we've solved all of the educational problems facing our students in District 742 today. But what I hear loud and strong in these presentations is that many of our kids are doing well. Many of them are doing much higher than the state average in their performance. Many of them are struggling. But the point is, we have the professional staff, we have the interventions and the strategies that are best practice as far as we know, and we have people that are implementing those strategies and doing everything they can to help all kids achieve, and for the really talented ones to continue to excel beyond where they are. But my question would be, who's got the answer? I mean, who's, who's ended the achievement gap? We're in for a long struggle as we address that issue as a school district, and I think the important thing is, in my mind, that we can see where we are, we have best practice strategies, and a great professional staff that is addressing the needs of the kids as best they can. So.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you to the three of you for your presentation. I think I'm going to cut off the questions at this point. We've got Andy sitting out there that's been waiting for an awful long time, and I think we need to move to the next item, so. The next item on our agenda is still in the discussion items, it shouldn't be a very long one, though, it's going to be a summary of the October work session. Dr. Marcia Baish.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, and members of the board. I'm going to give you highlights from the last board work session. The first item on that agenda was the New Tech High School update. David Leopold, architect with IIW Minnesota, along with David Motzenbecker, landscape architect with the Cunningham Group, and Andy Faulkner, ICS Consulting, presented an update that evening. David Motzenbecker shared the landscape review presentation, stated that the goal of the landscape program is to be an educational feature of the school, looking at both educational and ecological advantages, as well as ways to reduce maintenance, man-hours, and expenses. He noted benefits from having rain gardens and native prairie on site. He reviewed the design concept, native plant communities near the New Tech site, the overall site plan with surrounding context, and the areas of the site plan, including the front entry, commons, courtyard, rain gardens, learning neighborhoods, and the short grass prairie that surrounds the high school. David Leopold highlighted the new location for the Tiger, which will be adjacent to the Tiger Den right off the- the Tiger Den right off the main entry of the building. Andy Faulkner reviewed the schedule of the bid packages and provided a construction update, sharing progress pictures, including footing and foundation plans. The second item on the agenda was a Quarry View Education Center update. Superintendent Jett shared that the Quarry View progress is currently behind by four weeks. The delay in structural steel shop drawings, some middle is the main cause for that. The recent weather will provide some additional delay. The steel erectors have been advised to provide more manpower and longer workdays. They appear to be in agreement with the request. The additional steel erector manpower will not be an added cost and will allow some schedule advancements. Exterior wall framing is moving forward, and keeping in pace with steel erectors, and concrete floors are being installed on the first and second floors. The third item was a career and technical education presentation by Leah Samms, RCT coordinator. She stated that we are aligned with Minnesota's World's Best Workforce Legislation Goal Number Four of ensuring all students are career and college-ready. At the basic level, being career and college-ready means graduating from high school with the knowledge, skills, and attributes to successfully transition to post-secondary training or education, and/or secure, meaningful, family-sustaining employment. Leah explained that CTEs and unduplicated sequences, a sequence of strong academic and career and technical courses. It includes exploration of careers within a career cluster and/or pathway. CTE encourages opportunities for students to participate in structured learning experiences and career and technical student organizations. It also prepares students through coursework that aligns with business and industry standards, and also provides opportunities for students to earn college and career, earn college credit for courses successfully completed during their high school years. Leah shared information on the career and technical departments in the district, along with the proposed future adjustments. Department areas include courses in business, family and consumer science, health science, tech ed, and work experience. In summary, Leah stressed the importance of career and technical education, noting that students are more engaged, find worth in their high school education, and value education insofar that they continue their studies and continue to pursue their career pathway of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. And now we move into the discussion and action items. The first item is an action item, and Andy Faulkner from ICS Consulting is going to present to us the bid award for Tech High School Bid Package Number Two, WorkScope 7, 8, 9, and 10. Andy?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Dahlgren and the rest of the board. I'm sticking with the standard presentation that we came forth with on Bid Pack One. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. So we'll start with our brief schedule overview, where we had already been due with Bid Pack One. We're here tonight with Bid Pack Two, and then Bid Pack Three gets issued for bids on November 17th, with bids received on December 19th. A quick permit update, we have all our permits in hand except for the DNR Creek Crossing permit, which we are anxiously awaiting. We should have that by December. This is the recommendation award that I presented to Amy Scholarood, recommending the award of the WorkScope 7, 8, 9, and 10, which I am before you tonight for. Here is that recap. So WorkScope 7 is for the masonry and the stone veneer, and we are recommending we award that to Axel Omen for $1,570,000. WorkScope 8 is the precast wall panels, precast plank, and precast roof that is over the pool area. We're recommending to award to Wells Concrete for $3,742,910. WorkScope 9 is the structural steel and metal fabrication material. We're recommending award to Ben Structural Fabrication of $2,926,813. And WorkScope 10 is the structural steel and metal fabrication install to Soul's Company for $1,350,000.
Andy, how do these compare to the estimates that we had?
Overall, with Bid Package One and Bid Package Two, it puts us $258,000 underneath our estimate.
Does anyone have any other questions? I know the Finance Committee spent some time on this, and the Finance Committee is making the recommendation that we adopt it, along with the administration, but Bruce?
Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion at this time?
Yeah.
I'd like...
Yeah, that's fine, we can do it.
Okay, I move to accept this bid package, bid award, as presented, Bid Package Number Two, Tech High School New Site.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. Now, is there any further questions? Jeff?
Can you talk to me about WorkScope Number Eight? There was only one person that came back. Give me a history on that.
It's precast wall panels and planks, so they're architectural wall panels. There's only a few fabricators in the Midwest that can supply those. There were two of them specifically in the specifications. Wells was one of them, and the other one was Gage Brothers out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And we expected Gage to bid the project coming right into bid day. I talked to him on the morning of the bid, and they decided to pull. They had four other projects that were closer in proximity to their location, and that's why. I asked them to not inform Wells that they were pulling in the bid process, and they ensured me they would not.
Where did this come in, this exact WorkScope One? Did it come in higher, lower than you expected?
That WorkScope was actually underneath our estimate.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Bruce, would you call a roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Moes, yes. The second maker, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Monica Segura.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Polis.
Yes.
And Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Motion passes seven to nothing. Next, we have purchase of the property adjacent to the New Tech High School at 3614 County Road 74, St. Cloud, Minnesota. Amy Scholarood is going to present on that.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren, Superintendent Jett, members of the board. That is not seeming to focus.
Not showing up on our screens either, Amy. I wonder if there's... There it is.
Okay. So what you see in front of you is a map of the New Tech High School site. The area that is outlined in pink is the property that we have the purchase agreement in front of you for this evening. You'll see there's, it's approximately five acres is the squared-in property. The amount, or the area there that's highlighted, shaded in in pink, is the current road driveway access into the site that was previously granted access for us through an easement. And so, what we have proposed in front of you tonight is to purchase this property. Purchase price, as you'll see in the purchase agreement, is $230,000. Just a little background in terms of some of the advantages for the district as far as owning the site. Two key advantages are to have us have complete control of that easement, so that we don't have to have an easement agreement. We own the access into the site. And the other significant advantage is to create the buffer between the district property for the new high school and the other residential property. You'll see on the far edge is County Road 74, and there are a number of other residential properties that are between County Road 74 and the new site, and so this property creates that buffer. In addition, going into the future, it does provide us some other options in terms of potential parking. There's some buildings on site that could potentially be used. Those analysis will be done here in the near future. Are there any questions on the purchase agreement?
Amy, where are the funds coming from? What, so is this coming out of the bond proceeds, or is this coming out of a different fund?
This is not coming from bond proceeds. This is coming from operating capital reserves. And so, you'll be seeing that information when the audit gets presented. There was some spend-down of operating capital. That fund, that operating capital reserve, did not spend down as far as was projected. There was some savings, and some other purchases that weren't made, and so that's where the funding is coming. We didn't want it to come out of the bond proceeds, given that that budget had already been established.
Are there any potential cost savings for us down the road, from the buildings that are existing on that property, or is...
Yes, there is a heated maintenance shed on the property that could potentially be utilized as part of the site plan. That may or may not change some of the original plans for maintenance and outbuildings. As I said, none of those decisions have been made or finalized. Obviously, we haven't taken possession of the property yet. Once that happens, then we'll have some of that analysis work done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Bruce.
Amy, is there any improvement or any cost in terms of improving that land, or making it in any fashion costly to us to do anything to that land until we use it?
No, at this point, there's no cost or improvements that are necessary. The improvements into the drive itself were already part of the plan to turn the current driveway into the road access to the site. So nothing's changing with that. That's all proceeding as planned, was already in the bid specifications.
And is there, I'm sorry, Bruce.
I was going to ask, does there have to be any, on the side closest to 74, the other properties, does there have to be any fencing or anything in that regard?
There's no requirement to do that. And as I said, at this point, we're not intending to build or develop that, you know, down the road. If we were to do that, that may be a consideration, but nothing necessary at this time.
Thank you.
Have you had conversations with the city? Does it need to be rezoned, or is it zoned properly currently for...
The city has expressed no issues. We did confirm with the city that they would be able to pull that in, considering that it's adjacent to our, the property that we own, that once the transfer of ownership is made, that they would do a replanning of that.
So the biggest advantage to us is that we get ownership of the access, and that's a very important access to us. That's where the buses are going to be coming and going from, I believe?
Yes, all the buses and the utility vehicles.
So I think it's, for what we're getting or gaining from it, I think it's just, it's almost a no-brainer on this, for me. I'll certainly be supporting it. Are there any further questions, or, yes, Monica?
So for people, Amy, that I don't know about these things, can you tell me a little bit more about what are the disadvantages of not buying it?
A little bit more about what?
The disadvantages of not buying it.
So the primary disadvantage of not buying it is that easement. So we were in the process of working out an easement agreement, which is a legal document, in terms of the access, but we don't own that. So, you know, when there becomes issues or improvements, there's that back and forth about who's responsible, because, you know, we're paying to put the road in initially, but we don't own that land. And so that can become down the road. If, you know, at this point, the property owners have been very cooperative with the district. However, if they were to sell to a new person, you know, they wanted to leave, and they were to sell to a new homeowner, we may not get that cooperation from a future tenant of that property. So that's the primary thing. Like I said, the other significant advantage is that buffer, and the fact that it's, you know, it's five acres of property right adjacent to our fields, to that east side of the property. In the future, we may want to expand parking, so that there's parking more, you know, in closer proximity. It could potentially give us an opportunity to add field space. So there's just a lot of advantages to securing that. Now, we have the current owner who expressed an interest in working with the district to sell. Like I said, if they were to sell to someone else, that opportunity may not come forward in the future.
So why, you mentioned a little bit something about parking lot, but why do we want to buy the whole thing instead of just buying the portion of the road?
It's all one parcel. So currently, you know, the property owner wouldn't have sold us just the road access. They were interested in selling the entire property.
Well, we sort of bought the road when we bought the easement, but this is an asset that, we didn't buy it at the time because we were trying to be, work with the family. I mean, they might not have, it's my understanding, they might not have sold us the whole if we'd have said, "You gotta leave." But we wind up with an asset that could be potentially very valuable to us, and if a future board ever decides that we don't need it, it's gonna be nothing but more valuable.
Right.
So it just seems to me, not only no-brainer from the point of view of the benefits that we gain, but also it's money in the bank.
Yeah, it's definitely an investment, and to your effect, if we don't, you know, we may not end up needing it for field space or parking, but it's an asset, and it's nice to have that if we do need that room for future expansion, because if we, you know, we're pretty well landlocked on the site. Otherwise, there's really no opportunity to the north. The city has the park to the east, and so, you know, there's land to the south, but we've had no, you know, interest from those property owners in selling. And so, to be able to seize the opportunity when we have somebody who's willing and interested to that effect is definitely something that I think we should take advantage of. And just to note, too, that this did go through the Finance and Audit Committee. Just wanted to make that noted as well.
Bruce, would you call roll? We have, we had a motion and a second, correct? No?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I missed it.
I'll make a motion now that we purchased a property at 3614 County Road 74.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Bruce, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Jeff Polis.
Yes.
The second maker, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Yes.
Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Excuse me, Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
And Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a lease agreement for the same property adjacent to the New Tech High School at 3614 County Road 74, St. Cloud, Minnesota. And Amy Scholarood, could you please fill us in on the lease agreement?
Yes, so when conversations began with the current property owners, it, you know, we're going into winter here, they expressed desire that, you know, as we proceed in construction, that they would be interested in selling, however, didn't want to feel rushed to vacate the property going into winter, wanted to be able to have time to make, you know, arrangements for where they were going to move and all of that. So they have asked that they reside in the property through June 30th, with a determined amount of rent. You'll see that in the lease agreement. And so, that is what you see in front of you, is for them to stay through June 30th of '18.
Are there any questions? Bruce?
I will make a motion that we approve the lease of this property.
Second?
I'll second it now.
Jeff? Is there any further discussion on this? So they're leasing back the property for about eight months, it looks like. Any further questions? No? If not, Bruce, would you call roll?
Maker of the motion, Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Second maker, Jeff Polis.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Bruce Moes, yes.
Yes.
And Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our superintendent evaluation summary, and board member and Personnel Committee Chair, Monica Segura-Schwarz, will present on it. Monica?
So I have given some copies of the summary of the evaluation that we have for the Superintendent Willie Jett. We have a process that is now yearly and is following the MSBA, Minnesota School Boards Association's guidelines, that look at policy and governance, planning and assessment, instructional leadership, organizational management, communication and community relations, and professionalism. We met with the members of the cabinet, the Chair, Al Dahlgren, and I met with each one of the members of the cabinet, and then we had a closed session, a last work session in October, that we discussed... further the evaluation with every person in the board. So, in terms of the evaluation... Oh, yes, I forgot that we told Willie what we found. We met with Willie Jett last week. So, in terms of the evaluation, the District 742 Board recognizes Willie Jett as an exemplary leader that gives him high remarks in all areas of leadership as he worked diligently for the success of all the students in our district. Mr. Jett is especially recognized for keeping the students in the forefront of all business decisions. He is often described as being a student-centered and constant reminders to the board and staff about our goal as a district and as a reason to be an act, it is educating children. Mr. Jett has an inherent ability to establish and maintain trusting relationships with people. He brings out the best in his staff and while maintaining strong one-on-one relationships, keeps the entire group of individuals focused on achieving the overarching goals for our district. He also has a great ability to relate and build relationships with young people and remain close to students. They know him and see him as accessible and friendly. Mr. Jett knows the students by name, remembers their sports, hobbies, and personal traits, always inquiring about progress in activities, schoolwork, or that class that was giving them a hard time last time that they ran into each other. In terms of policy and governance, we have a highlighted, that was mentioned by the cabinet and members of the board about the process of policy, reviewing our policy for our district, for the entire district last year. That process give everybody in the district not only knowledge about the policy, but also ownership about it. And it reflects the leadership of Mr. Jett and offering guidance in this process. The review was a collaborative effort that also demonstrates Mr. Jett's skills in managing processes and leading groups in fully inclusive manner. Mr. Jett's leadership promotes a culture of inclusiveness, teamwork, and consultation to stakeholders. Under his leadership, many groups and teams have been formed and there is also consultation from diverse stakeholders. He often asks when somebody is missing, who is missing, and who should be present. Mr. Jett led also a successful 104 million lay-by campaign in which voters approved funding for the building of a New Tech High School. Mr. Jett led these efforts and successfully gained the support of business of the community leaders as well as general public. In the times he has been diligent in assembling and leading an inclusive team of stakeholders to ensure the building represents the visions and needs of our community for years to come. Mr. Jett has been transformative leader and he has delivered education in our district. Our, in the St. Cloud area, school district faces many challenges not seen nearly by its surrounding districts. And some would say that not all the districts stay wide. Mr. Jett and his team have implemented programs for process needed to ensure growth in the student achievement for all students. A partial list of some of these are for here. And we also saw some of them in our presentations today. So, I won't read the list, but I will have it ready for you. The school board also has been working in measuring the results of the changes that Mr. Jett has implemented. We have seen double-digit improvements in literacy among all levels of all students when accounting for demographic changes in our district. The district, the strategies put in place by Mr. Jett and his team has shown the improvement in the results of students from new to new country EL to students performing several years ahead of grade level. Members of the board have focused on these results because the results publicly reported by the state of Minnesota only provide a comparison between districts without attention to specific populations, characteristics of them, averaging all the scores. The distinction is important for our district because the number of students new to this education system being tested in our district. The board has carefully analyzed the data and found tremendous improvements, being all the students and high performance in the students population comparable to districts in the area. Another area of strength for Mr. Jett is his strategic ability to remain calm and de-escalate intense situations as they occur. The staff is very appreciative of his ability to speak. And all of them spoke of how he always able to escalate crises and refocus on what is being, what is best for students, the staff in the situation at hand. The Board of Education believes that Mr. Jett has proven to be the right person for the job and very valuable asset for our community. Our community is unique and Mr. Jett has funneled the challenges of uniqueness into an example of what successful leaders can approach, can do. While our district's student population shows similarities in comparison and diversity to metro districts, we do not match in the scales or size of the community resources and organizations that help support them. When compared to other districts in an immediate area, our student population has very different backgrounds that impact how education is delivered. Mr. Jett has been able to identify strengths and challenges within our uniqueness, capitalizing on strengths while addressing overcoming many challenges. We on the board and the St. Cloud area district stakeholders should be proud to call such a strong leader our superintendent.
Thank you, Monica. And now, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to go and I'm going to, I'll start just like as we did in our closed session and each of us, give each of us an opportunity to state publicly our, you know, our thoughts on our superintendent and our relationship and how we think he's doing. We're just given a chance to talk a little bit, each one of us. But I just want to say, and I want to say publicly, that leading a district of our size, our diversity, with as many challenges as we have in this district is a very, very, very complicated thing. It's, there's an art to it. And when we say in this evaluation that Mr. Jett is the right person for the job, I honestly believe that. He has made so many changes in this district since he came. It's staggering to me. And to be able to do that and change the way that education is delivered in a way that we see all students improving. We see from the very early, you know, brand-new EL students coming into the district that have never had any formal education and putting in place programs and policies that bring them up to grade level, or not necessarily up to grade level, but bring them up to a proficient level after five or six years in the district. And at the same time, managing programs that are taking our highest-performing students and ensuring that they're being challenged and driven up to an even higher level. It's been an incredible thing to watch. And Willie, you know, your sense of calm in crisis and the way that you lead people and truly, you know, I know I made the comment before. In the interview session, when we were selecting a superintendent, I asked a question of you. What's the one thing that we are going to say about Willie Jett a year from now if we would choose to hire you? And you, your answer was, you're going to look at me and you're going to say, "How did you get to know so many people so fast?" And as I said to you a few days ago, I do say that. It's incredible, the number of people that you know and the number of people that know you and that you interact with. But the piece that really shocked me and took me by surprise is it's not just Mayor Kleis or the mayors of the cities in our school district and the, you know, the business people in the community that I would expect the superintendent to network with. It's the students. I can't, you walk through the halls of Apollo High School or Tech High School and students walking by, I mean, hundreds of students walking past. And you know them by name and you, and they come up to you. And you have this relationship with students. And at the same time, you've developed that same relationship or a really good relationship with the community leaders within the community. And so, that's, you're right, I do say that. How did you get to know so many? And how do you remember so many students by name in such a short time? It is incredible. But the work that you're doing in this district is incredible. You've taken us and put us on a path to success. I think that you are one of the best, if not the best superintendent in the state of Minnesota, and I think that we're very lucky to have you. Jerry.
When we praise our superintendent, we also are praising the team of people that work with you. And one of the things that, over the years, we've said as a board, and I think we've worked for as a district, is to become a continuous progress organization. And a continuous progress organization identifies places where it can approve without being defensive. And you and your team just do a fabulous job of that. If we have a discussion about whether math needs to improve or ELL needs to improve or whatever it might be, we don't get back from the team. You can't talk about math needing to improve because we're District 742, we're wonderful. What we get is how can we improve? And I think Bruce Hentges captured a little of that when he was talking about the essence of the two presentations we had today was not just, man, we're perfect, nor was it, oh, my God, we're terrible. It was the element of continuous progress. And for me, working with a team where you can ask questions and not get defensive back but you stand your ground when you, your team thinks you're right. So, it's both of those things. And that, to me, is the mark of a great team. You work together, you believe in continuous progress, you're proud of what you do, but you're never, ever satisfied. And I think those two things together just make for a great team.
Jeff?
Mine will be very short and sweet. I'm proud to be a board member. I think the future looks bright with you as a superintendent. And everything everybody else says, I'll say ditto.
Ann.
I care very deeply about this community and I'm very thankful that you are part of it. It was asked earlier, when are we going to see a change? And I look at those numbers and I think, right there, it's in front of us, there is a change. And you are leading the way for that. And we're never going to be, you know, that's good, we're good enough. You're always driven and looking for improvement. But I appreciate how much change and improvement has already been made, so thank you.
Bruce Mose.
Superintendent Jett, Willie, you are transforming this school district and you're transforming this community. You're a transformative leader. And we know that when we listen carefully to some of the narratives that are in the community now that haven't been part of this community. You're leading changes, as I said earlier, from, to assets instead of deficits. We're talking about our assets instead of our deficits in the whole community. And we're talking about abundances of many shapes and sizes and forms and kinds, abundances instead of scarcitys. These are things that you have your fingerprints all over. And one of the things I'll never forget in that interview, many years back, or back in '13, you said one of the best pieces, in the interview of your life, you were interviewing for the position of your greatest ambition. And you went back to a quote from your grandmother. And you said, "My grandmother once told me, never look at a person's mouth, look at their feet. Don't pay attention to what they're saying they're going to do, look at what they're doing. Where have they come from, where are they going?" I just struck me at that time in that interview that that was just the essence of who you were as a human being. And that shows up all the time in every conversation, every dialogue, and every relationship you make with people. Thank you.
Bruce Hentges, I'm going to go to you and then I'll come back to the Chair of the Personnel Committee, Monica.
Okay. I don't know how much I can add to what has already been said. I would certainly want to echo all of the comments that have been made. And I think I mentioned this recently when we talked also is, maybe the best compliment that I can give you is that a former, as a former administrator in District 742, I would have very much enjoyed working for you as a superintendent. Your leadership is positive and your focus is on kids. And frankly, that is enough right there. But, you know, as I was sitting here thinking about, you know, what words would I use to describe you or what words come to my mind when I think about your leadership? I think of credible. You're a credible leader because of the way that you go about leading the school district. You're trusted, friendly and well-liked, ethical, high morals, standards above all. You're consistent and you're calm. And then, I come back to student-focused, which I think is, you know, the most important and that you clearly shine on. So, I would say thanks for your leadership and keep up the great work.
Monica?
Superintendent Jett, I'm going to state the evidence. You're a black man. And for me, that is important. It is important because as I witnessed once advisor of a student telling this student of color, when this student was about to drop off from school and saying, "I can't do it." This advisor was telling them, "By being there in that chair, you have already brought all statistics about what you can be." All the statistics said that you should not be in that chair. All the statistics said that you should be out of here. So, you already made it there, so just keep going. As a person of color, I can tell you that that is so true for a chair in a school, for a chair in higher education, and it's even harder for the chair that you're sitting on right now. When a person of color is exceeding, is excelling, is endowed. When a person of color fails, is expected. And I think that you have to deal with that and you had had to deal with that your whole life to get there. So, only you could have been able to address the biggest challenges that we have in this district. Because only you will know how to move us forward and you will know that we needed to invest in our students. And we needed to invest in our students and you will convince us all that an investment is needed because you believe that it's also possible. You also believe that to be in that chair for a person like you, in this chair for a person like me, is possible and is possible for all our students. So, thank you, Willie.
Okay. First and foremost, I'd like to just, when you, I'm not one who sits and has someone talk about him or be comfortable in that moment. You know, it feels good, but it's a different place for me. So, the first words that come to mind is thank you. And as I said the other day, first and foremost, I'm telling you, I always say, "Thank you for allowing me to be dad." Okay? Thank you for allowing me to be a family, we put family first. So, I always, this board, I tell you, thank you for that. As Jerry said, and I have it written down here, my evaluation, it's my evaluation, but it's our evaluation. I can start at the top and say, thank you, the board, it's our evaluation because you've been supportive. And so, everything that we've done, couldn't do it without board saying, get after it, and supporting us in that. The execs, I want to say, thank you for putting up with me. But seriously, the executive team for implementing, for working throughout their departments with people, and just being that rock-solid support for the entire district. For the teachers, that's people that have the boots on the ground. They are developing relationships, they're in it each and every day. So that evaluation is, my evaluation is our evaluation. For the staff, when I say staff, I'm talking custodians and cooks and non-licensed. The interaction that they have each and every day, we always talk about it being a classroom. For me, those interactions each and every day, that's the teachable moment. And so, that's our evaluation. I also have to include the community in that piece, because this community has placed an emphasis on education. This community has backed us with a $104 million referendum. This community has supported us in all of our movements within the last five years and before that. But as you see, we're looking at growth, we're looking at things that are happening, all the positives throughout the district. The data shows you, approves it. And so that's our entire community's evaluation. And so, I think, I believe all of us need to know it, and all of us need to get credit for it. And yep, it's the superintendent's evaluation, yep, it's Willie Jeff's evaluation, but in my mind, it's all of our evaluation. So, thank you.
And I know it's the seven of us up here speaking, but I think that we speak on behalf of the staff, your executive team and the staff in the district. And we are the elected representatives for the community, so we are speaking on behalf of the community too. And I think when I say that we are proud to call you our superintendent, I think the community is proud to call you our superintendent. And I know you've said before that your mom worries about you, and you can feel free to make a copy of the tape of this meeting and send it to your mother and tell her that things are going okay.
I will get that done.
And now we'll move on to our next item, but thank you, Willie, for, you are doing a fantastic job, and the board is very proud of that. Bruce Moos, did you have a comment? Oh, it is an action item, yes, I'm sorry. So we need, I'm looking for a motion to accept the superintendent's evaluation.
To both.
Monica Moos, do I have a second? Jerry, is there any further discussion? Any more comments? Okay, then Bruce, we're looking for a roll.
Maker of the motion, Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Second maker, Jerry Von Korf.
Yes.
Jeff Polriss.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Bruce Moos, yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Bruce Hentges.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we can move on. We can move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Willie Jeff.
Good evening, Chair Dahlgren and members of the board. Tullahie Community School is recipient of a Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation 2017 Innovation Award. Tullahie will receive $1,000 and be recognized at a November 30 GSDC investor meeting. Tullahie was selected for a nonprofit organization award for the construction of an adaptive playground, the first of its kind in Minnesota, keeping in line with Tullahie. They recently hosted a kindness retreat where teachers, volunteers, parents, and students learned how to spread kindness. District 742 is teaching kindness so we can all go far together. Next, congratulations to the Equity Services Team and everyone who volunteered and participated in the Go Far Together Fun Run Walk and Picnic on Saturday, September 30. The event brought together a variety of our families and created a great opportunity for staff, parents, students, and community members to connect. And it was one of those moments on a Saturday that was, it was good times. Tonight, so I'm saying congratulations, they can't hear this or see it, but maybe I could record it, congratulations to the Tech Girls Tennis Team. After defeating Minnetonka in the semifinals yesterday, and ousting second seeded Monamidi, the team took runner-up at the state tournament to first seed Edina. So our girls finished second in the state in tennis. Also, they are, today, they are doing individual and doubles, and so they're having some success in that also. And I was getting text messages because one of our executives, one of her children might be participating in that, and so she's keeping us up to date in terms of what's going on. So if you heard my phone going zzzzzzzzz, that, I'm gonna blame Tracy. Okay? As part of our consent agenda this evening, the board accepted an exciting grant. On behalf of District 742, I would like to express our gratitude to the W.K. Kellogg Foundation for the award of an $888,205 grant to fund a three-year project at Discovery and Tullahie Community Schools. This project was specifically designed for these schools to expand co-teaching to pre-K, to provide ongoing mentoring and coaching for co-teachers, to create welcoming, community-based family engagement centers, and to train all school staff in trauma-informed education. The purpose of the project is to create a welcoming and differentiated learning environment for all students and to increase achievement. This project directly aligns with objectives defined in the district's strategic plan, and we are excited to build upon that work already begun at Discovery and Tullahie schools. Now, as I'm saying that, my phone buzzed again. So something tells me I need to look, because I'm making sure, was it part of the consent agenda? It was?
Yes.
It was? Okay, all right. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
You might have a report from the tennis tournament on your, that's what you thought.
Okay, nope. All right, thank you.
Okay, the Standing Committee reports. Board Development Policy and Governance, Shannon Hawes.
We met this past Tuesday, October 24th. We reviewed the annual outline for board meeting presentation topics. And then Mary Kusterman joined us in discussion regarding adjustments or additions that are going to be made to Board Book. As we're moving towards the next couple of months, we're gonna have paperless board meetings, Board Book is going to have some adjustments, and you can watch for those adjustments coming up in a month.
Next would be Community Linkages and Engagement. Bruce Moos.
Mr. Chair, the Community Linkage Engagement Committee did not meet in October, but there are a number of engagement events that have been attended. On Wednesday, October 11th, I made a presentation at the Sterns History Museum to the Breakfast Club, and I was invited to speak on the Tech Centennial Celebration. On Thursday, October 12th, there was an event at the Paramount Theater, it was called the TEDx St. Cloud Event. If we're familiar with the TED Talks that are on social media, you understand how important those talks are and how motivating they are. St. Cloud had its own TED event, and our own teacher, Tech High School, Ayan Omar, was one of the featured persons in that motivating evening of testimony. On Tuesday, October 17th, the Unite Community Conversation on Race event was held at the Rivers Edge Convention Center. Mr. Von Korf, myself, and Monica Segura-Schwarz attended, and, gosh, Monica ducked out here, but Monica, I was gonna just thank you. You were a co-chair for that event, and it was very, very nicely and creatively organized, and thank you very much. And then, what's upcoming here in terms of engagement here is a series of engagements with local mayors. Jeff Polriss and Shannon Hawes and I have met this evening, and we talked about two upcoming mayoral conversations that are scheduled. A letter was sent to the six mayors within our school district, and we had replies from two of them. Mayor Dave Kleis accepted an invitation to join us in a dialogue, and that's gonna take place Tuesday, November 7th, 1:30 PM in City Hall. And Mayor Rick Miller of Way Park accepted our invitation for a dialogue on Friday, November 10th, 8 o'clock AM at the Way Park City Hall. And so I'm just gonna pass over right now to the superintendent and to the board chair, a proposed outline of items that we'll confer with the mayors on, and we'll wait until I've had a chance to speak with the superintendent to get some direction on this here. But we're proposing that we will speak to the mayors regarding facilities, demographics, language, and student scores, and community education. And we'll seek to get some direction on how we can gather information and documentation that we can use in our conversations with the mayors. And then, of course, we'll be listening carefully for the information that they'll be giving back to us, and we will report that back to the superintendent. We are also then anticipating meetings in the future with Mayor Rick Schultz of St. Joseph, Mayor Bob Crowell of St. Augusta, Mayor Pete Edmondson of Clearwater, and Mayor Tim Gunner of Clear Lake. That's my report.
Thank you, Bruce. Next is Finance and Audit Committee, Jeff Polriss.
Al, and board members, we actually met today about 2 o'clock. At the meeting, it was passed on and discussed to the committee that the superintendent met with the city officials to discuss the existing tech. The city has expressed an interest in taking the lead in the redevelopment of the tech property. We are in primary, preliminary conversations with the city on what that would look like. That was it.
Thank you, Jeff. Legislative Committee, Bruce Hentges.
Mr. Chair, the legislative committee actually will be meeting next Tuesday morning with two of our local legislators, Representative Knoblock and Representative Teis, to discuss the upcoming legislative session. And Mr. Von Korf, as you can tell, has been putting out a lot of pressure for us to discuss the special education cross-subsidy. Don't be surprised if we come back with a one-issue legislative agenda, our platform for this next session, because obviously, it's so important to District 742 that the state find a way to address, long-term, the special education cross-subsidy, because as has been discussed this evening, it would open up so many opportunities for us as the district educationally. So, we will be discussing a number of issues, but certainly that issue with them.
Thanks, Bruce. Next is Personnel and Negotiations Committee, Monica Segura-Schwarz.
So in our last meeting of negotiations, we had an update of negotiations. The teachers and everybody else that had been in negotiations right now, we still have some way to go in all the groups, and each board member is in charge of the groups. We also look at the organizational chart of the district. It was layout different, a little bit more clear, in my opinion. We like it. And we look at some parts of, some movements that are in restructuring that are more obvious in the organizational chart, in who supervises what and who goes where. So that was pretty much it.
Thank you. And last but not least, Achievement Integration and Equity Committee, Jerry Von Korf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on Wednesday. We've been looking, previewing the vision card presentations that you saw today, not the school ones, but we saw the math and science. And part of the purpose has been to foster communication between the folks that are preparing it and the board, to see if, how statistics should be presented and non-statistic should be presented. And if you, we heard a little bit about people liking what they saw this time, but, you know, for the, one of the reasons that we preview this is to foster communication on those presentations, and if you have further ideas or concerns, or positives or negatives, feel free to move in. They are really working hard to listen to what we want and also to make it make sense. On, we will not hold our November meeting. The committee decided to hear a presentation from an attorney, Paula Forbes. Am I saying her name correctly? Thanks to Bruce Hentges for identifying and inviting her. She is the consultant who's been working with the AMSD on the Reimagine Minnesota Initiative, and she'll also, she'll be talking about that and about the Cruz-Guzman litigation that kind of triggered that re-imagination at the Chair's initiative, thinking that maybe we need to have a broader participation in that discussion than just the three of us. We've decided to meet at the same time as the Delt Team, the District's Equity Leadership Team, and hopefully, they will all be there, because it's a regular meeting time. And I've also invited a single representative of the Partners for Student Success who they've identified. So we should have a really kind of a robust quality meeting. We're gonna provide Attorney Forbes some background information about the district, because we have similar problems and strengths, and also some very different issues and strengths. And so we want to have her get a head start with that. I, finally, I sent around a memo to the board, really in my capacity as one of the members of the curriculum, what I call the Curriculum Advisory Committee, the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I don't want to talk about that in detail, just to say that I really do think, and I've heard from some of the parent members of the committee as well, that we ought to examine what's going, what that committee's function is. And I really feel, in order to do a quality job of that, that the board needs to read the part of the world's best workforce statute that says what that committee must do, because it has an important role in, statutory role in strategic planning, and that the executive leadership should take a real hard look at that, and that the members of the committee, if we decide that we're gonna follow the law, that the members of that committee should also really take a hard look and understand what their, what their role is and how we want to implement that. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jerry. Next, the last item on the agenda tonight is our future agenda items. The Board of Education members may suggest items and topics for future board meeting agendas at this time. At our next work session, we're gonna be having a new tech high school update. We're gonna have an update on the Quarryview Education Center building that's going up, and we will also have a short update on the new administrative offices that are going to be built out soon. I think the plan there really is to have the district office moved before school is out, so that any changes that need to be made at Apollo can be done over the summer. So we'll talk a little bit about what's happening over there. There's gonna be a demographics report given to the board, and there will also be a technology update for the board at that workshop. Is there any board member that would like to suggest any items that we did not list here? If not, last item on the agenda is adjournment, and as of now, if there is no further discussion from any board members, the meeting is adjourned.